Father, we thank you for this chance to get together. I want to say a special prayer for Madeline. May she continue to be with her and continue to bless her and give her strength and that. You're the great physician. May you surround her with people who are there to help her. And we just pray for her, period. Pray for her, period. Father, we want to pray for all the people who are still here. There's lots that's going on in our community. We pray for those who are just praying to their spoken and unspoken. All the kids that are in the school right now, their schools right now, that are in sickness and despair. For their actual attention and all these things that they're at.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, a nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to talk about opportunities with university and then just one piece of voice that we could put something together to send to their administration if they want to try to get back together. But there were four things that I had made a list before our retreats and a list that the council and the council meetings that I asked them. We had Chief Lowens here, Craig and Mike with planning department is here, Chad is here with the airport. The three, I think, four topics, the last topic would be just moving forward and recommendations. But the three topics that I've heard and that we can add whatever, but really the area around campus on how we not only improve that area, but partner with the university in that area. There's been applications for university property acquisition that I had not been involved in, but Craig had really sent a request. I didn't realize this, but anytime the university buys or wants to buy property around, anytime the university wants to buy.
There we go. Anytime the university wants to buy property around what's considered their growth area, they have to bring that to the city to sign off. And so the planning department had been working on some different opportunities around that area. And then the last thing I had was for Chad, just to give us an update on the airport. So Rick, you had some, did you have, and then economic development was one that Craig had thrown to me on partnering on graduate jobs. But there's not really a formal agenda besides just talking about those things and really getting, we've beat a lot of those issues to death, but really getting input from everyone to talk about that. So it'd probably be good, let's start, if you're okay, just to get an update since we are here, on where we are at the airport. Chad, if you want to give an update. And then we can go to university property acquisition and let Greg give you some information and then the effect of the university housing. But it would be nice if everyone is in agreement with this, that since everyone's here except for Madeline, that if there's, if you have issues, let's talk about that, but make sure that we, everybody's on the same page as what we're sending back to MTSU and what we feel like needs to, you know, as far as a discussion with Dr. McPhee at the next meeting.
All right, Chad?
All right. From the airport standpoint, just to start out with the update, Craig, if you would, go to some of the graphs at the bottom. Keep going. Go back one. This really kind of shows us where we were in March and April of the springtime. This is a, this is a data from FlightAware. And you could see our operations were really, a high number of operations. That's where we also had a lot of complaints from pilots. Really did not have good cooperation on how to manage the flight training operations through MTSU. Change in personnel. And we also did the airport capacity study. Then there's a recognition of that, yes, there is a capacity study, change in policies and procedures at MTSU and those that we're adopting at the airport. Now we have the same number of students, same number of flight labs, and our operations went down though because they did realize that by separating or moving the other, a lot of the touch and go type closed traffic operations, we did see a significant drop in operations here, which was a good thing. Yet our fuel sales were still where they were before. So as far as a financial thing, we didn't take a hit anywhere in there. If we want to go back to the facilities and Craig, the current things that we're dealing with right now, and I guess it'll, it'll have to deal with, really, we don't know what the plan is for their, for their future location of their flight training and what all that entails. But really, we haven't seen a lot of capital investment here at, on their airport campus. And what we're dealing with now is a lot of the cleanup around the Miller Lanier Building. Some of this is a lot of donated type of airport airplane parts and things like that. But this is the view, if you would, from Main Street in Murfreesboro as you're coming in off the runway, is Conex boxes a lot. Now, they've come a long way, they've done a lot of cleanup, but this is still what remains. I've got a meeting with the facility director next week to be going over what is, what is, there's certain things that they say they need, but there's a lot of trailers and stuff that hasn't been used in a decade that just needs to go away and cleaning up that area. And some of the type of little storage things that they bought at Lowe's or Home Depot or something and put up, we're trying to clean that up as well. It is an issue that we're not just with MTSU, but other areas where we have, you know, corporations and companies here that do work, there's things that go outside. How do we manage that? How do we clean it up or how do we screen that? We currently have before the airport commission, a property management policy, and that's going before them at our meeting on Monday. If you want to go to the next, there's an example of just how we can fix areas like that around the different hangars. There's their airport development plan. And what we're trying to do now is, we have such a demand for ramp space, is we're trying to incorporate that the best we can in providing some more, relocating some of their aircraft from the main ramp to their airport campus area. So the next drawing, if you would, Craig, is, go back, is to try to use the 727 ramp, do some paving there to get those off, to give us room for the transient and base customers that are coming in. And the next slide is kind of an example of a peak day where we had a number of companies, we have a couple of companies, a couple of aircraft in here that were doing business here in Murfreesboro. One, there was NetJets coming in with some folks. And then there was another caravan behind that, and we were just simply running out of room. So we've got to, we've got to be able to expand our ramp a little bit. So moving, relocating some MTSU aircraft more close to their campus is going to be a key on that. And like I said, there's, it's noticeable, I think, on the operations standpoint, this fall of the success of some of those policies. The true test will come in March and April, when the primary students are back this spring doing training. From what I understand, MTSU started a new policy where those primary students are being assigned different airports, not Murfreesboro. So they'll be doing all their primary training of pattern work, landings, takeoffs at other airports. And then the base here is for them to come and go from. So I think we'll see, my hope is that we'll see a significant change there in how the operations are. And I, what we're seeing is less pilot complaints because of these policies.
So what we saw in the sense that we got on the capacity of the airport and how it was being utilized and the issues that were created by MTSU, particularly last spring, but every spring, we made a suggestion that they do exactly what they're doing now and that's to spread it out to other airports to the city. We have a lot of small general aviation airports and they can spread out and go out there and that would alleviate our capacity issues. When we brought that to them 18 months ago, they were adamant that they weren't interested in doing anything like that or any discussion or have the city any input into any of their flight operations activities. So after a lot of discussion and a lot of different wrestling, we, there was some change in personnel and the new flight operator was Brian.
He's, he is operations manager.
The operations manager, the interim operations manager, he looked at it after he got in and said, well, what they're saying makes sense. I mean, we're hurting ourselves. We're not able to get off the ground because we're eating up the pattern in the airport. So we can't do training either, and so let's spread out. And so essentially, they did what we said 18 months ago. They finally come to the conclusion that that does make some sense and they have done it. And so the chart that you saw before, what Brian has told us is that there's a comparable amount of flight activity going on that there was last spring going on right now, and yet we don't have the issues we had last spring because of that adjustment that they've made. So that's been very good. The other issue on the ground, what we did, what we had, we went back and we did a study and looked at our capacity and found out we needed more tie downs on the ramp. And so we went to all the commercial operators, which includes MTSU, and said, you need to give up tie downs. If you're on a monthly rental basis, at the end of the month, your lease is going to be up on X amount of tie downs, you need to figure out what you're going to do. We've worked with them since then, they haven't been without tie downs, but they don't have a monthly lease, they're doing them on a daily basis. What we identified is that, I'll find the, what we identified is that they do have a space in front of that Miller Lanier Building where there's four existing tie downs on. We feel like we can get four to five over on where the 727 was. And so eight or nine tie downs can go over to a longer term lease, monthly, back to monthly. Of course, the ones that's on their lease space, they can have for as long as they want monthly rent over here. And we've told them that, and you'll see from the arrow that go in there, there's additional space that if you as a university wants to pay to lay down concrete and put in tie downs, you can, you can do that. It becomes city property and you don't have to lease it, but you can do that if you want. And then we can accommodate more of your planes closer to you, which alleviates the ramp issues that Chad had identified before. And we know that we need for itinerant traffic as it comes through the airport and for some of the demand that we have that's backed up for tie down space at the airport. That's what we've told the university is the plan that they'll need to follow. We're still in discussions with this, we've had good discussions with them, we've had a little pushback on some of this because it's going to require some change in their, how they do their work out of the hangar that they need to clean up behind, of which will be eliminated when they clean up the garbage that's behind it. And so I think we're on a good path. I think that's a good discussion that we've had with them. I think we need to stick on that path along there and if they want to lay down new concrete, then they can lay down new concrete. Now, they said they're going to move, so obviously we're not going to, they won't take the concrete with them, it'll be the airport's concrete that they lay down. But because they are temporary and they do want to relocate, I don't think it's incumbent upon the city to incur the cost to create new ramp space. They need to create it to serve their interim needs until they, until they figure out what they are going to do.
One of the questions that, you know, I keep hearing, or one of the things I keep hearing is that, you know, where, I guess part of it that worries me is the discussion about how much they're planning to grow over the next two or three years. You know, I've heard, you know, I always get it confused on whether or not they doubled in three years or tripled in two years or what, you know, there's, it's just a lot of growth that I think has happened in the last three years. And they are planning for in the next two or three years, whatever those numbers were. And so I guess part of what, you know, I know there is some long-term discussion, but part of what's always bothered me about, you know, other than just the way it's been handled by when we make suggestions, it just hits a brick wall, you know, other than that is, you know, not just what does the flight plan look like? I mean, you know, frankly, I'm not sure I saw a whole lot of decrease in that schedule, you know, in that, in that graph you had. I mean, because really, we, we can't look at next spring versus last spring. That was just last year that we're looking at.
Well, you wouldn't see a decrease. You'd see the same number, but you didn't, the decrease is the effect that isn't shown on the graph. That was a number of operations.
That would be, that would be landings and takeoffs, right?
What we were, yeah, what we were seeing in March and April of last year was days, I mean, most of the days of the month were in the 500 to 600 operations per day. That's when you got calls, that's when we got calls, pilots were complaining. Then we get into, into the fall, we do have a little bit different curriculum, but we're flying, they were flying the same number of hours, same number of students, and now we were showing just 400 operations. We never got into that threshold of 500 to 600 operations. If we did, it was maybe for a day or two after a weather event. So, you know, that was.
The important thing is that they, when they go up, which is not reflected on here, they go somewhere else. So they're not staying at.
Well, it would be reflected in operations, wouldn't it?
Yes, and that, and if you would.
But not the circling or, you don't see that on the chart, you just see the takeoff and the landing.
Right.
Yeah.
Go, show the, one of the charts there, Craig, was.
So, look, I just kind of trust you, and I, I trust you that it is going down a bit. But if you look at January versus this January, they'll be close to the same.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's all I've got to look at.
Right. Go to the, go to my vert tower numbers, if you would. There's a, now we're looking at September, I'm sorry, this is March, and you see here, we're getting into the 500, 600 operations per day. And it's somewhere even scaring 700. If you go to October, the next slide, now we're nowhere near 500 and 600. These are operations, that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
They're flying the same number of people, same number of hours, but they're not staying here and circling.
I guess what I would say is, if I could look at, if you're telling me spring is different than fall normally for how their plan, their program is.
No.
I thought you said that earlier.
Well, it is, it's a little bit different in the program, but it's, but they're flying the same number of students, same number of hours, so.
So my question is, you know, if they're going to double the number of students in the next three years, then are they cutting it by at least half by doing this and we're going to just get right back to where we were? Are we planning, you know, that was, I guess kind of something in my mind that I'm trying to.
It seems like, Chad and Craig, they're maximizing their fleet now. So, you know, if they had more students, they wouldn't have planes to put them in, it wouldn't be.
That's part of why I'm asking, is we were talking, we were just talking about there's tie down spaces and that sort of thing. I mean, look, here's, and I'm going to go ahead and just mention something about this whole discussion that's on my mind about this, what, not just the airport, the whole discussions. I mean, you know, we're caught between a place where, you know, I think most people on this council at least are thinking this way, is from the standpoint of, you know, we're trying not to cross the line of telling somebody how to exactly run their own business because that's their business, but we're also trying to protect what it is we're supposed to be protecting, which is the city and the citizens, right? And, you know, so how do we kind of, how do we kind of do that? Well, there are only some things that we do control. One of them isn't what they do with their enrollment, right? We don't control what they do with their enrollment, period. Now, we have some impact of that, and we have things that we do control that might deal with that. You know, same may go for crime and housing, same may go for these other things that we're talking about. And what are the things that we can do from our perspective, you know, to handle some of these things? So I'm just trying to formulate in my mind as it relates to building, putting concrete pads and putting more tie downs and that sort of thing.
Your point's well taken, I'll tell you why, is because we know they have 10 more planes on order. And we've been.
Hey Craig, will you turn on your mic?
Is it not on?
I don't think so. There you go.
Okay, there it is. We know that there's 10 more planes on order. 10. So they're, increase their fleet by about 30%. And we've been adamant that they're not, those 10 planes cannot show up here. We don't have the space for them and we don't want them operating out of, out of this airport. And they've said that they understand that. So they've now committed as a university that those 10 planes won't come here. But that would be the concern on growth, is if they grow and double, then they would have to increase their fleet, which would not only put more operations.
That was exactly where I was going with all that.
Exactly, yeah.
They're just looking at.
That's the danger. So when we talked to them about laying concrete, we said, you can lay it, it's on our land, it's not on your lease space. You can put tie downs in, but we're going to approve it. And we're not going to approve it for 10 more planes coming in. We're going to approve it because you're moving existing planes off of those tie downs to a different tie down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, and that's fine.
Trying to get my head around kind of where we're, where we are.
And, and it's not just the airport that is a limiting factor to their program. There's only so many FA designated examiners that, that those students have to go through to get their license by the end of the semester. And the problem with those students is there's not enough examiners to get through, so then they, then they get forced out of the next lab. So it's not just us, it's not just the airport, there's other factors in here that, that are a limiting factor that we're not taking into consideration when they keep their enrollment wide open for this program.
Yeah. I don't want to go back and rehash everything that, that has happened over the last two years, but, I mean, we didn't get, I say we, I didn't get involved with this until, you know, we were, I was asked to come to a meeting because Chad and Gary had tried to meet with their staff and can't come, to come up with reasonable solutions to say, hey, can you take your planes elsewhere away from the pattern? You know, really, all the things that we're doing now, and I mean, I'm not, I'll tell you all when I screw up, that, that meeting that we first had, I mean, it was a, I don't want to say it was a good cop, bad cop, but it was definitely, hey, this is the direction after the council had saw some of the things to say, this is what we need to do. Because their staff had been so reluctant, or really not, I don't want to say reluctant, they had been really adamant that they weren't doing anything. They weren't going to do anything to control growth, they weren't going to do anything to control the pattern. So, but we, we at no time said we're trying to kick you all out, did we?
No, Mayor, the, in fact, our initial discussions with MTSU is we were sensing there was a problem. We were getting complaints from pilots and things like that. And we sat down with them and we said, you know, help us design policies, look at our, look at your program, look at what we're doing. And is there something that you guys see that we can do, you can do, maybe the base customers need to do to address this, address these problems? And at first, they were going to give us some sort of, they were going to come up with something, and then it, then it turned back to us and they said, we're not going to come up with anything, you do it and tell us. And then by the next time, Mr. Whitaker and I were at a meeting and it was, we were told anything that we come up with, they're not going to comply with because it was going to get in the way of their growth. And that's, that's what prompted our meeting. And in that meeting, it was not, we need you to, we don't want you here, it was, if you're going to grow your program and you need to satellite out, we'll help you. If you decide you're going to grow the program and you don't want to be at the Murfreesboro Airport anymore, or you can't because it's, it just doesn't fit your vision, we'll help you. And somehow that, that message got deranged and it was, we don't want you at the airport anymore. That was not the fact. It was, the fact was, whatever happens, we're a partner in this, we'll help you through that process. It may take years, what can we do to facilitate your vision?
But, I mean, the other part for the council to realize too, Mr. Whitaker was working with them on building two new hangars. The city was going to build new hangars. They were getting ready to be in the design phase for their MP program and classroom space, and that got pulled off the table. Now, part of that was.
The university.
By the university. Part of that was because of COVID and people didn't know what the effects were going to be, but really pilot training through COVID went, demand went up. So, I mean, I think where we are now, y'all worked really hard to get us to that, to that point, I, I mean, I think, but.
The test will come in March and April, but I'm, I'm confident with these policies and procedures that are in place that we'll see that change and I, I think we'll see it continue this spring.
But if you had to say, if MTSU just decided this spring that they have the funding and they wanted to leave tomorrow, well, not tomorrow, they made the decision they were going to leave, how long would it take them to build a facility, build a new runway, taxiway and move their fleet?
I know the last time we did an airport layout plan, Mayor, it took us five years just to get through the airport layout plan, and it took us another three years to do the 800-foot runway extension. So it, you know, it's a long process. And, and part of their plan is not just to move their facilities, but to provide a second runway and tower and things like that. It takes a long time.
Yeah, if they were to move to an airport that had facilities, they could do it relatively fast, but no airport has facilities that, that can handle them. And what Chad's talking about is their plan to build new facilities. In an airport layout plan, the reason it takes so long is it's approved by the FAA. You submit it, it's approved by the FAA, it takes five years to get through that process about. And so, and that's what they're talking about now, is expanding an existing airport with facilities that would handle them. So that's, it's a, it's five years. Now, five years relatively speaking is, from our planning standpoint, not very long. And I think we can accommodate. So we have to, as we look at what we're going to do in the meantime, to address their growth if they have any. And I think that the university now has realized that they need to address that growth out of that program as well. But if we address any of the growth, we have to realize that whatever we're doing is for a short period of time, a relatively short period of time. Because five years, we're not going to build another hangar for them that they're going to vacate in five years. I mean, we wouldn't do that. We would build a hangar for, that would accommodate other tenants that would come in and use it at the end of that period of time.
So if they're talking about building their own facility and everything, how much money have they invested in our airport?
Not much. The last, I think the last facility, Craig, that they, that they put in here was 2016, I believe, was a less than a million dollar simulator building.
All right, so when we.
But nobody else gets to use that, that's just their.
That's just, yeah, that's just for, for their students.
Benefiting necessarily the airport, that's.
No, I mean, the, the benefits of this program to the community is, is, you know, an indirect benefit to the community.
Yeah. Direct.
Yeah.
So when we did the renovation here at the airport, the $6 million, how much did they put in?
Into this terminal?
Yes.
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, they leased part of it. We have a lease agreement, but I mean, it's not, you know, it's, making money on that, we're just leasing the space out.
I think we, what we leased them, was it 30, how many square feet do they have? 6,000 square feet?
Oh, in the, in the terminal? It's around 2,000 or 3,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's like $3,000 a month or something.
Yeah, 4,000 a month.
Not much.
It's not a, how much, do you know, I mean, how much do they, how much is the annual sales in fuel?
It was around, the last, last study we did, around $150,000 after, you know, taxes and everything like that that we re-received. It's not, it's, they get a significant decrease in, in the price of fuel as a, as a bulk fuel purchaser. And that's something we're also looking at, is, is changing that equation that's been around here for 20 years.
Let me, let me say something here. The issues of the pattern and the capacity of the pattern and the problems that we've had, that's gotten better. The dialogue is solving some of those issues.
Yes.
The on-the-ground stuff is kind of, you know, this is just, I mean, we're, they have, we've gotten their attention as far as MTSU understands what we were trying to communicate to them 18 months ago, I guess. Finally, they understand the issues that we're facing and some of the problems. So they're beginning to address some of these concerns.
Yes.
You know, I, I think that all the stuff that we're talking about relates to, do they understand what the problem is and are they willing to cooperate with us in finding solutions because there's a limited resource, whether it be airspace or ground space or whatever it is, there's, there's a limited resource out there and we have to make that available to all of our citizens and they, they are part of that community. I, I'm not sure, there's a whole lot, I mean, I'd like to see, you know, this continued dialogue, I think that needs to be expressed, you know, that, that they are hearing what we're saying and things are moving in what we feel to be a positive direction. But I'm not so sure, I mean, I'll just be honest with you, I'm not so sure what is accomplished when we keep saying, you know, some of the things that they didn't do and they didn't say, and the people that we were dealing with didn't hear us. I mean, that's water over the dam and stuff that's not moving us in a positive direction. So when we're asking MTSU to be partners with this, some of that has to be, they've done, maybe not all they could, maybe not all they should, but they've done something to move in a collaborative manner in addressing some of these. Maybe not all they should, but they've done something to move in a collaborative manner in addressing some of these problems. Because we're starting to see it get better. So, like I say, I, I'm just a little concerned that we just constantly go back over what happened eighteen months ago. And the kind of response that we were getting when they didn't want to invest in this and they didn't want to invest in that. If, if there's something that we feel like they should do, let's deal with people and the circumstances as they are today. And maybe they would be a financial partner. If they, if it was five or ten years, this actual move of, of the program to another airport. Who's to say that they wouldn't be willing to address a, a hangar and partner with us in building the additional hangars? I don't know, but it seems like there's, there not be, that may be something we should ask.
Couple, if I could make a couple of points.
Well, yeah, so let me, I mean, because here's something that, you know, first of all, one thing that we, we got to speak realistically about. Is that cooperation probably resulted in the fact of us actually taking action on the ground? I mean, it's no, it's, I don't think it's a coincidence that when we finally said, okay, we're going to do something about it. We're going to start taking some tie downs away, that all of a sudden the cooperation was there. And it sucks that it has to be that way. Okay, I mean, we might as, we all tried, I had personal conversations, many people had personal conversations and, and all the, let's work together and we love each other stuff. And it went nowhere during that entire period. But when we finally had to say, okay, we got to make some changes, all of a sudden it started changing. I, I'm guessing that's not a coincidence. So I'm just saying that from a standpoint, I don't want to go back either. One of the things that I was going to ask for, you know, I don't think it's healthy to go necessarily back and deal with that eighteen months ago, all that stuff. But the reality is we have to be willing to say, what are the things that we can do that place, you know, that puts some control there? Because look, as, as happy as I am that progress is being made and the numbers are down and things are safer and all those, I am, okay? I'm, I'm tickled to death with it. I'm not so sure that they will ever have a secondary facility. I'm not so sure that if they do have a secondary facility, it'll be within the next fifteen years. In which time they could double or triple their numbers or quadruple their numbers. And we're way back over where we were on that chart last March and April. If we don't have some things in place on the ground here to say, that's never going to happen here, period. And so what I would be looking for is some sort of parameters that the council can say about our airport. What do we want it to look like two, three, four, five, six, ten years from now? How much of that's, how much of its capacity will we allow one user? Whether it be MTSU or the other folks or whoever. I mean, those big picture things are the things that I think we better be putting in place right now. Because we're going to, you know, some people are going to be sitting back in this tickle deal with the same thing two or three years from now. If they do increase, because you said it's the same number of pilots and less. It's not going to be less if it's a double the number of pilots. Or forty percent more pilots or seventy percent more pilots, whatever. The number is just going to go right back up and we're all going to be sitting here going, oh, how did that happen?
Rick, we didn't have, we didn't have, we weren't gathering the data that shows this picture. That you, we, we weren't doing that. That airware was not flight aware, it was not something that we had. We, we, we learned how to, because we had to be able to, you know, be definitive in the information that we were giving them. And, and so, so, so now we have that, that procedure to be able to say, when things change, if they change then. And we're going to be monitoring that to be able to make sure and be able to tell something that we didn't have before. So I think that, I think we've come to some
We then say as a body that, all right, now we have the data, we're going to have the data in the future. Are we going to control what that data consists of? Are we going to put any parameters in place? Are we willing to say as a body, hey, look, that six hundred number was too many? You know?
I think that's been expressed. I mean, I, I think that information, they, they've gotten that information that that's not acceptable.
How are we, yeah, okay, but if they're going to double the size or if they're going to go up by fifty percent the next
They got to find other, they got to find other ways to address that growth.
So can we talk about the tie down situation? Because we've talked about that, we haven't been specific about numbers. So we said, I think you're probably right. Part of the probable motivation for them to act was related to the restriction on the tie downs. I, I don't view that as a bad thing. I've said this. I can't blame MTSU for wanting to protect its program. I've also said that I don't think it's MTSU's responsibility to deal with capacity at our airport. That's our, that's our issue. Now, I do think there's some responsibility they have as a local university in our city, partners and all that kind of stuff. I think you want to be friendly about that. But I mean, it's not Dr. McPhee's responsibility to say, let me worry about the airport's capacity issue. His job is to worry about growing the program. That's what
Those two things are very, those two things are very, that's like
Well, let me get through this, let me get through this, I understand. But in terms of what we've done, how many tie downs did they have, do they have today?
Thirty-three.
How many did they have?
They, they still have thirty-three.
Here's one of my points though, if, if they have the same amount of tie downs and the activity is down, then we, we had a conversation about what we were willing to do. And we haven't taken anything from them. And I want to give them credit for having done something because we can see the results, right? So if they have ten more planes, where are they going to put them? Do we have tie downs here for them?
We don't have any tie downs.
We have a waiting list. If they get ten more planes.
Well, because What are they going to do with?
I'm just asking the question. It's not, I mean, it's not our problem.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, I think that's the
I mean, if they're not, if they don't come here, it's not our problem.
But they don't have tie downs.
Yeah, but I think that's the thing, you know, and I'm like, I'm with you, Bill, I'm not going back eighteen months. But the narrative that the city's the bad guy in this is just false. I mean, because if we had not had this discussion, those ten planes would be sitting here in two or three months. And that's really what, what, why that we ended up having the discussion or why Chad started this. I mean, you know, we keep The growth was projected at six percent per year, which is a manageable number that we could handle. That's about twenty pilots per year. And it did that until the last three years or four years and it went up a hundred and twenty-three percent. Which is where all of a sudden, and, and I, I mean, I would take responsibility as a, as a city to say, well, hey. You know, we didn't know it went up that quick. That's where I, I do think that the city and the university have a responsibility to say, from a pilot's standpoint. If you've got a plane, you have a takeoff and a landing every forty-three seconds during a peak, a peak period in the city. Which is where we are during the fall. The most dangerous time as a pilot that you have accidents. And MTSU, I think, does not run an unsafe program. I think they, I think the issue is an unsafe environment when you're put in those situations. That the most dangerous time when you're, when you're landing is when you have to do a go around. And a go around is when something, somebody doesn't clear the runway and you have to take off again. And that's where the accidents happen. So I think that's where the city was going and saying, hey, well, let's address these. And that's where we are now. So what I would say is, as a council member, all due respect, if you look at the campus that MTSU has right here. And compare that to other world-class programs. That's not what we expect. A gravel parking lot where, how many gravel parking lots do we allow in Murfreesboro? We, we don't allow gravel, we don't, so I think what we need to have is a commitment from the university, in my opinion, to say, here's what we expect. Give us capital outlays that you're going to have in your facility. Give us what you're going to do paving wise, tell us where, where you're going to be student wise. And that's what we can handle. I mean, that would be my, my thought, and I don't know that number, they, they know that number.
And I think those are all good fair conversations. The same thing is talking about tenant responsibility and, and setting clear expectations about the way things look. I think that is our responsibility to do that. So I mean, I don't have an issue with any of those things. But, but I do think, I think Rick is right. I think that forcing their hand created some traction. But I, I also don't think we can dismiss the fact that the operations are down based on the data that we have.
I agree, by the way, I'm happy to say, you know, I've said that.
I know.
I'm happy about that and no missing that at all.
But what I just want to have clarity, because I'm not a pilot, I've never flown a plane, I've flown in a commercial plane. But I don't know anything about any of this. So I'm doing the best I can to figure this out as we go. But if they have the same amount of tie downs and are going to lease them any more tie downs, how can the planes come here? Help, help me understand that.
Because Let me run this by you so I can clarify something since I, since I brought it up, hold on. Here's the deal, what I'm asking is for what are we willing to do? If we're all willing to say, the number is capped at thirty-three. Then if that's what we're willing to say, and that means that they're going to have to figure out what they do on their ten. And that's what, then the numbers are going to be at four hundred or less. If we're willing to say, hey, we think the number should be, you know, on seven day rolling average of three hundred and fifty or less. Or whatever the, the, the numbers would look like, like for this fall. And the maximum number that we'll allow is X percent or thirty-three or however we want to deal with that. That's what I'm actually looking for. So that we don't get ourselves in a position of what I'm saying I'm worried about two or three or four years from now. Where we're still in this, where we just hadn't put anything on paper. None of us have said as a collective group, you know, or I shouldn't say none of us, we haven't said as a collective group. You know, this is what we expect, this is what we're willing to limit and do on the ground. So that these things don't, aren't just a problem we're all sitting here two or three years from now. Or somebody sitting here two or three years from now going, how did we get back here, you know, to six hundred? So that's exactly the stuff I'm looking for.
That, that
I'm good with.
Chad, that's what's being communicated to MTSU is where we are is where we are. The sausage is about as stuffed as it can be. And any growth that happens beyond where we are now has to, you have to address that in another way. That's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the way
Here's what I'm going to say though, guys, there's a big difference. I am happy and I'm tickled to death that the progress has been made. But my, what I think needs to happen is that we need to say, this is what it's, this is what our intentions are for the future as a group. That's, that's my, so that.
I'm happy to have that conversation. I just, I still want Chad to answer the question, how, where are they going to do the planes if they don't have any more tie downs?
Well, we don't, we don't have any more physical space. We have a waiting list, believe it or not, people that want to come and just tie down their aircraft. Believe it or not. But we have a waiting list. We don't have enough room. And, and I, and I shared that picture with you of the, of the, of the corporate aircraft coming in. Just to give you an example that, okay, if it's a small plane, there's a lot of ramp space out there. But you get two or three or four corporate aircraft in here, they demand a lot more room. And we're running out of that room. If I had one more plane or a helicopter come at that moment, we would have shut down a taxiway for it to park.
So Ronnie, I don't think it's, I don't think it's trying to kick MTSU out. I think the council is going to have to make an overall decision as a direction towards the university. Because, I mean, the direction where we were headed was predominantly to be a training airport. I mean, that's really the direction that if we had not stepped in, the direction that we were headed to is
I don't have any mittens, I'm going to have to
Yeah, so, you know, so this is what we have to think about.
It's warm up here, Rick, Ronnie, I don't know what, what your problem is.
Coach Hypel flew in on Friday, I think he was here Friday, where the UT's plane was.
Medical flight today to our, to our hospital. Ambulance on site, another charter right there behind it, I mean.
And I would have never known all this until I started learning about it. But all I'm saying, I will, I'm not, nor have I ever said MTSU runs a unsafe program. But if you talk to any pilot, period, who's not associated with the training school and you ask them about coming into Murfreesboro. A hundred out of a hundred pilots will tell you, I don't like coming into that airport, it's too busy, it's unsafe. And I mean, that's, that's, that's across the board. So I think what we have to be able to do is a council is to say, if we're going to continue to invest in the airport. Which I think we, no council's invested more in the airport over the last ten years than this council. Then we have to make the decision, do we want, and this is the conversation I have with the university. Look, we're fine with you at this level right here. But, you know, one jet fills up and it's twenty-five hundred dollars that the, that the jet fills up. Your plane has thirty-two gallons, you fill your plane up for a hundred and fifty bucks. So you've got to have fifteen planes fill up for what it costs one of these planes to fill up. So, and we're giving you discounts on that. So moving forward, what do we want to see the airport be? And that, that's really the, the discussion.
The, the true difference that I, from my perspective in, in dealing with the university came when we had a new dean in place, a new chair. A new chief flight instructor, new assistant chief flight instructor, a new operations manager, when those positions. And then they also brought in a safety officer. When those new personnel came in, that's when the dialogue changed a hundred and eighty degrees. We, that's when we were able to make progress in, in addressing these issues. The other document that you don't, you haven't seen yet is a standard operating procedure. And that was, came from our, our study with the capacity study. A number of things that we can do here operationally that addresses exactly what you're talking about. How do we keep ourselves from getting where we're at capacity? And it doesn't happen the entire day. What it, when it happens, it's a few moments. It's fifteen minutes or twenty minutes of Beehive. How do we keep from getting there? So this standard operating procedures, we worked with not only MTSU, but the other flight school here at the airport, Murfreesboro Aviation. And said, all right, how do we keep that from happening? Flight training right now is the predominant activity here at this airport. So you set the standard here for how this pattern is going to operate today. So how are we going to work together and not hit those high numbers? So we came up with a number of, of ways in that we monitor it. We, we all, you know, Murfreesboro was the first one to get vert tower here in Tennessee. And, and it's been a great tool for us. Now MTSU has it, Murfreesboro Aviation has it. So they're all looking at the same picture we are. So they're monitoring. When there's too many planes in the pattern, I make a call to MTSU, they, they have to disperse. Same with Murfreesboro Aviation. If there's too many planes sitting there on the taxiway waiting, like Chick-fil-A or somebody, I make the call, they have to disperse. And let these planes go because our pattern has gotten too full. It, it really, it was really the change in personnel that the dialogue and the productivity happened.
That particular document that you're talking about, so, you know, that may be part of, I mean, is that something that we're going to
Yes.
That may, that may kind of already be in existence to what, I mean, really where I'm going with this is some, you know, more formal way of us kind of saying, here are what our expectations are. Because like Bill has mentioned in the past about a lot of things, you know, the whole idea of making sure we're doing our part on the communication. Because, you know, if, if I'm calling and saying, hey, look, you know, can you move an hour here or there? Can you do this or can you do that? And then Bill's saying something else, and Ronnie's saying something different, you know, it's not a good uniform way. What I'm most worried about is, okay, get the number down. And putting ourselves in a position where that number doesn't just go back up. Whatever they do with their growth is whatever they do with their growth, I don't have to tell them a thing. They know what they're working with because there's a finite number of feet of asphalt out there. Right? And so there's a finite, there's some finite level of activity that can be out there. And I do rely on you and I trust you to do that stuff. And I trust that that document will handle it, if you say it'll handle it. You know where my direction is, which is, hey, I like four hundred better than six hundred. I think that's a safer number and probably takes away a lot of stress. And it stays four hundred.
Yeah, and I think one thing, and I wouldn't get too hung up on those numbers.
I know.
But, you know, but, yeah, yeah. But flight training, four hundred or five hundred, and it just sits here. Maybe in the future, we have a different operation here and there's four, five hundred, six hundred flights out of here because of business. They're in, they're out. Not a problem. You know, we can handle that. It was the consistency and the change and just, yes. That was the problem, yeah. So that's
The finite number of asphalt, it's a finite amount of air in this, in this square four miles or whatever the number is.
Let me, let me speak just a little bit since I, I mean, I am not an air, a pilot either and have no really background other than taking aerial pictures. But on the airport commission, you have some remarkable people who are so knowledgeable about this particular airport. And how general aviation functions. These are people throughout the state that are, that are really concerned and we're working on those procedures. I hear them talk, I don't contribute a lot, I just listen. But, but it is amazing to me that, I mean, Rick, I guess we could go through into the weeds and start expressing our opinions about numbers of four hundred or six hundred and stuff. But, but I, I think that's what you give a commission the responsibility. They have a particular expertise and knowledge. And there's some things that they've contributed in discussion that I think are in the works, that are being considered, that will make significant. And this is not just, I mean, there's other things that we haven't even talked about, rentals and, you know, how agreements that have to be
how agreements that have to be leases for, uh, space on the, on the airport property. Lots of things that are being discussed. We're in kind of flux now because we, we've, we've identified a problem, but it hasn't, we haven't, I don't know that we have given it enough time to work out some con- you know, s- solutions in the long run. And, and I think we're moving in a positive direction. And I guess I'm a little bit more patient. When you get older, you get a little bit more patient sometimes. But, but, but I'm willing to give it a little time. Not that it's gonna be the definitive problem. We'll probably have to come up with some other conversations and have some other difficult conversations. But I think things are, particularly at the airport, are moving in a positive direction. And I'm willing to give it a little time before I think we need to jump in and start saying definitively, you know, how we want it to, to be.
I think, I think that document is gonna say how we want it to be, if I'm hearing that right.
Yes, and, and it is, it is gonna be a living document. It's gonna be something that, uh, we're meeting, uh, with MTSU, Murfreesboro Aviation, and any other organization here on this airport that is contributing to operations that we see becomes a problem or an issue. And, and that document may grow. There may be some things that we redefine through time because it just isn't working. Or maybe there's something that we retract because that isn't an issue anymore, or it didn't work. So it's something that we're gonna be continuing to change and update. And it's, it's all about conversation with all of our operators. In February, we have a, a meeting set, scheduled with the FAA, which is a, uh, safety officer who's gonna come in and talk about, uh, the pattern. And, and not only how, uh, what's, what's happened there is because the pattern was kind of so congested, then some of our base customers would cut corners and things like that to try to get in because of the frustration and the level of stress. If we can, can, control that, now we, now those base customers will feel more at ease to come in like you should. And so, again, it's about safety, it's about not only MTSU, but communicating that with our whole base customers.
Sir, y'all okay? Maybe the, listen, the questions to ask is, is, one, what is the future plans for the program? What, and, and that is future ten, fifteen years from now. But what, what's the future plan being here at KMBT? And what growth are they anticipating?
Good question.
And then I, I think the other part that's important is what's the capital expenditures that, besides planes? You know, what's the capital expenditures that's gonna be put into the facility, um, overall? You know, maybe that's a question that we ask.
So, so I'm gonna offer a different perspective on that. And so this is where this gets tough for me. Rather than saying, hey, MTSU, tell me what you're gonna do. Right? Why wouldn't we just tell MTSU what we're going to do? This is, we're saying this is our airport, this is what we want. If, if we're saying we do not want one tenant, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of like Bill, I don't like referring directly to MTSU because I think we're putting a target on them, in my opinion. But, but as a large, the largest tenant of, whether it be ground space or whatever else, you know, it is what it is, that's who it is.
Yeah.
So with that being said, if, if we're saying, if they brought ten more planes here, they don't have anywhere to put them. That means nobody else has anywhere to put ten more planes, too. So that's really important. We don't have to just say it's MTSU. One of the things we can say is, hey, guess what? We have not grown to a capacity where we can give you all of our tie-down space. So we don't want to throw you out in three weeks. You know there's no more room to bring your ten planes, we don't want to see them. So we appreciate the fact that the numbers are down because you're not touching and going. Are they still touching and going at all here?
They're, they're sub, yes, but it's not, not to that level at all.
So maybe we negotiate, much like what Bill's saying, some additional time for them to find placement. Because I, I know we speculate that it would take too long, or they're not intentional, they're not being sincere about moving. I'm gonna assume they are moving. Now, I don't like the idea that they're moving, that's a different issue. But I can't, I, I have to take them at their word because that's what they're saying, we're moving. Right? So why don't, why not come up with a scenario that says, if we want the beehive to go away, help us make the beehive go away, we'll give you a certain amount of time for these thirty-two tie-downs, but you're gonna lose X amount over this period of time because we need that capacity back for the airport. That solves the problem of the number of planes they have here. And unless they're gonna be really unfriendly and just intentionally base out of everywhere else and touch and go in Murfreesboro just out of spite, why would it not solve itself?
So, I, you know, I, I don't know. It sounds to me like a lot of us are saying the same thing, just in different ways, and we keep going around in circles in this deal. But what I'm trying to get at, and Bill, I'm not trying to get down in the weeds and say you're gonna have exactly this number of flights or whatever. I mean, I, I use that as an example, like I said, it's just an example of something that we have data points on, and we can measure so that we can use that as, as examples for how, what we expect as a council. And honestly, I'm, I'm a little bit feeling like what Ronnie's feeling on this is to say, you know, we can ask them and they can tell us what their plans are, but it really doesn't matter what their plans are if there's no place to put the planes here, you know, they're.
Why, why are we talking about?
They can buy a hundred more planes if they decide they want to bu- buy a hundred more planes. But the only reason why, what I want us to be able to say is, is make it very clear that there is no more space there. What are the parameters that we need? I'm not even saying I know what the parameters are. I asked to, you know, I said, maybe we need to get staff to come back to us and say, you know, here are the things that we need to say. I just know what the end result I don't want to have happen. And that is, for everything to go back, because the realistic way to look at this is, we can just say, oh, hey, look, it's gotten better, so there's no more problem. And let's just let everything go and, and just be like, okay.
And I'm not saying that either.
So realistic, yeah, because the realistic result of that is, two or three years from now, we're gonna be in another problem. Okay?
Yeah.
All I want to know is that we have made a decision on what we expect from the airport. And whether you talk about it in terms of number of flights, or whether you talk about it in number of tie-downs, I don't know.
Well, so that's.
And that makes sense. But here's one thing I do want to ask about that. I think I read in one of those emails somewhere along the way, in the last year or two here, that we had already tried to give them this document, and the other, there were other people who were willing to sign it, they were not.
Correct.
That different.
That document has morphed so many times through the last several months that we finally have a document and the MTSU personnel that are in place that are in agreement with it.
All right, and is it going to, I think what I'm trying to ask, I'm not trying to say, my way is the way. I'm just trying to say, I want us to collectively make a way that is the way, that we, what we achieve with that damn document.
Yeah.
Does that make it so?
Yeah. I mean, I think the document has been, I mean, so Ronnie, everything, what everybody's talking about is two separate things. We're talking about standard operating procedures with the airspace, which we technically don't have control over the airspace. It's just everyb- it's like the turning lane when people are coming off. You know, you don't cut across the line before the guy in front of you does. You know, it's just, that's what we do. So I think what we've asked on the standard operating procedures, everybody's agreed to that. My question for Dr. Mcfee would be, hey, everybody at the airport's agreed to it. All your commercial users here have agreed to it, the administrative staff has agreed to it, why won't you agree to it? Why won't you sign it? Everybody else has, as opposed to a letter from the FAA that says, hey, you can't make them sign standard operating procedures. So I think that's where, that's the question number one. And then the question number two is for the council to say, okay, this is what we expect. Okay, so we, we, the issue, we can't, I mean, we didn't know this, we didn't know that the, that populate, student population had grown, the amount that it had grown, until it got to this issue. So we can't tell them how many people that they have in their program.
And we may not see it look like that, too. Look, we can't control your growth, we can control our capacity.
Right.
And your growth doesn't mean our capacity. And as far as facilities go, you're looking to make a bunch of capital expenditures at another airport. This is what we want our campus to look like. Maybe, do you want to have any operations here, or if you can't do like this?
And I think you do that in the lease agreement, which I think can be negotiated as we talk about the tie-downs and as we talk about how they do operate on a standard basis. I mean, I think all that stuff's connected. But Chad, another thing I'm curious about, we talk a lot about number of operations, the largest tenant, those types of things. Do we have any data on, you know, who's using our airport? Because i- in fairness of this conversation, you know, we're saying MTSU's seventy percent of the operations. Okay, so let's assume that's right. So that means we got thirty percent of other people, the, the thirty percent of those other operations, is it Chick-fil-A and all Chick-fil-A? Or is it Ronnie Martin taking a, a day flight with his airplane out of here? And when we say we're doing this for the citizens, are we talking about the citizens that are using the airport? Are we talking about the citizens that are being impacted by the airport? I think we need to be real specific about that because those are different things. I, I don't think the average person in Murfreesboro is flying a plane out of here. But I don't argue that citizens are impacted by the use of the airport. So I mean, I think that's relevant, but I'd like to know who we're freeing capacity up for. I think that's relevant to the conversation, too, because if we're saying, hey, MTSU can't have all this because we're gonna give it to somebody else, who are we giving it to?
So the thirty percent is, is individuals flying, it's companies flying, it's life flight flying, it's TDK. It's, it's a myriad of people, and it changes from day to day. And, you know, and part of the other concern, not only do we.
Do we have specific data? I mean, is there a way to track that?
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't know.
Right, right. And, and we can give you the, uh, the, the list of, of the different aircraft that come and go every day. We, we get that, uh, data from Ver Tower, who's, who's in, who's out. You know, the other concern that we had, uh, and this comes from an economic development standpoint, is we had companies telling us, we're not coming to your airport because it's, it's, it's crazy, it's too crowded.
I get it.
We're not gonna base here. And, and I had, and I lost customers that were in tea hangers, that were good, good folks here, good citizens of Murfreesboro, that went, would rather travel to another airport than base their aircraft here. So, uh, you know, that, that was, that was our concern on that.
And I think that's a great argument, and I think that's something we have to pay attention to. But if, if there are more touch and goes going other places, if we can limit the hangar tie-downs, I would have to think that that would handle it. And all this other stuff is just ancillary stuff. If you, if we say, hey, you can't have a gravel parking lot because you can't have a gravel parking lot, and here's a period of time with which you can make that right. Or you don't get your leases renewed. I mean, that stuff seems simple, I don't understand why it's so hard. But I also understand I'm sitting over here not dealing with it every day, so.
Ronnie, when I, I do want to make.
We have, I mean, as of last March, before we got Veritire in, additional data, probably better data. But we know that MTSU is seventy-three percent of the traffic. Murfreesboro Aviation was about ten percent, a little bit less. And then, then it was just a mix of everybody else.
But you're right, you're right, Ronnie. You've got, I mean, if you're on the ATC and you're being taken off to go land in Murfreesboro, they're not directing you in, they'll tell you, multiple bogies in Murfreesboro, good luck. And so, you know, the guy that I fly with, that's a, that's a forty, forty-five-year pilot, he's like, I won't, you know, he flies jets for a living.
Right.
Besides flying with me in a puddle jumper. And he's like, I won't fly in a Murfreesboro, it's too dangerous. You know, so I think that's where you have that discussion, what do we want to see the airport turn into? And I, I mean, I, I, for me, I'll tell y'all, and I said this publicly to Dr. Mcfee on the phone, I, I felt like this could have been solved in a month. Or, I, actually, I told him, I think this could be solved in two hours if people are just sat down and be reasonable and say, hey, we gotta work together. And we're not trying to tell you how to grow your program, we're just telling you what we can, what we can do. And I don't think MTSU would have to move. I mean, I, I, I mean, said that. But at the same time, you can't say we don't want any limits on the growth of our program and expect.
And we're not gonna make any changes to how we.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, I just don't see that that's our problem. Because if we limit their tie-downs and we negotiate how they use the airspace through the tie-downs and the leases, what am I missing about that?
That's, well, that's, that's what we're doing. I mean, essentially, we are doing that, it's.
Already sent that information to them.
And I think the way the FAA kind of looks at it is, is we're not, you don't want to discriminate against one particular company or anything like that. But you're looking at, what you're looking at is really saying, we are at a maximum, maximum of flight training activity here.
Yeah.
You have all kinds of other operations here, or other activities that occur here. I would hate for us to all of a sudden put up a wall and say, we can't, we can't grow here anymore at this airport. Well, no, you may not be able to grow, uh, flight training activities, but I, I would, I would assume that we would want to, we'd want to grow if we had an opportunity to bring in a company and they have a flight department, we'd want them to come in. If, if there was a air ambulance, or if there was a car, you know, something that was, you know, a benefit to our community, I, I think we'd want to grow that. We're not gonna say, we're not gonna grow just because we don't have any more room and we don't want MTSU to have any more tie-downs or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, from the very beginning, and we said it to MTSU, and everybody I talked to, and when I was trying to research this thing, they said, if MTSU could manage this, they could grow, they could do well, but they have to manage it. And, and I think that's why we, we called a timeout and asked on it. And, and now they, we're seeing the benefits of that.
I think one thing, too, that's just important, and I'll stop talking. But, uh, again, I, I don't doubt that we had to do some things that were difficult in order to get traction. I, I get that, and I think if I'm Dr. Mcfee and I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I think I would probably put up resistance to defend my program, just like anybody might their business or whatever. But we understand, I think, also, in any company, in any organization, how one person can cause difficulty in working through something. I think the fact that MTSU has turned over several people, you can't ignore that gesture. And, you know, from that standpoint, I, I think that is an effort towards goodwill, and I think does deserve some consideration. And I don't think we can just very heavy-handedly say, they're being difficult and they're not doing this, because I, I just don't think that's true. Now, while they're doing it, we can maybe take credit for that win if we want to, to say, we didn't really give them a whole lot of choice because we forced it, neither here nor there at this point. I think, I think they have made some changes, we're seeing it in the numbers, they've made a commitment to do something else. I do think there's progress.
I, I, I don't disagree, I think there is progress. We say consistently that with the turnover of personnel, that we've had very productive and good conversations.
I've heard that.
And, um, we, we have learned that we hit a wall, even though all on the operational level have kind of come to a consensus that makes sense, we can't get to a point. You mentioned the agreement before, we're not doing an agreement with them anymore because we had asked them to do an agreement that we felt like was reflecting exactly what they were doing and what they wanted, but couldn't get it forwarded through the administration there, which is fine. And so we backed up and said, fine, you know, we don't, we thought we could do an agreement with you because it'd be nice. We don't need you to do an agreement, we can pass standard operating procedures. And that's what we're gonna do. We can tell you, you need to use space you've already leased to put your planes in, and, and that we're going to put other tie-downs in and assign you those if you need tie-downs, that's where you're gonna be. We can do that without an agreement, and that's what we're gonna do. And whether they feel comfortable with that or not, I don't know. We're still waiting for a response, but that's, that's our position at this point in time. And then we've told them, we will work with you if you need more space. And we will work with you if you want to do relocation. I mean, we've consistently said, we want to have these dialogues and work with you. So, you know, we aren't, we haven't, we have not foreclosed any conversations with MTSU whatsoever. And I think we've made great progress. And we've given accolades to the people that have worked with us now. So I think we're at a point where it's pretty good, and we have some solutions. We want to make sure that they stay in place. March, April will be a test, it'll be a big test. But then, you know, it starts back up in fall, and then the next April, and it keeps going. And these people that we have talked to, and they've done very good. And I'll say, Dr. Van Patten, Brian Fields, uh, Dr.
Prellis.
Prellis, the new ch- chair, have, have been excellent to work with so far. Except for Dr. Prellis, they are interims. And we don't know who's gonna be the permanent. So we, I think we're in a good position, I, I think the university's in a good position. We don't know what their plans are. We don't know if they're still on the track of growing or not. They haven't shared that with us, and they haven't shared a whole lot with, about relocation. What we know, we learn usually from other sources. And that's fine, that's a prerogative, it doesn't really help us help them. But we've always said, if you tell us, we'll help you.
Are there data points or parameters, or any of, anything that is measurable that the council could give you guys guidance on as you, as you put together documents and as you put together things that you're asking them to agree to that would be, that would be more permanently in place rather than just, we have a good relationship right now? Are there some parameters, make, you know, I'm not saying it's the number of flights, but, but maybe that is part of what's in there, or it's a percentage of the tie-downs, or a percentage of the acti- or the operations? You know, what I, I guess that's what I would ask is that if there are some things like that that would be reasonable and not put you, you know, not put the airport as whole. I mean, you know, some of this stuff is getting pretty philosophical from the standpoint of, you know, hey, yeah. How mu- how many taxpayer dollars are we spending for this? For the benefit, seventy percent of one user? And, you know, is that really what we would expect the paying tax dollars for? You know, we've all been in this, you know, we all came into the. been in this, you know, we all came into these offices long after the airport was already here, and everybody just assumed, well, it's here, it's just part of the deal. You know, we just keep on, you know, approving the budget, and, you know, every now and again, we do, we make some improvements, you know, because it is just part of it. But, you know, these are the things that bring to light, you know. Is this a smart way to spend money? I mean, is this, you know, you know, is it important for our economic development? Is it, you know, well, if it's important for our economic development, but we can't use it for your economic development? You know, is it important for the number of jobs that MTSU is producing in pro pilots that stay and live right here in Murfreesboro? I'm not sure there's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's a whole bunch of those jobs, you know, here in Murfreesboro, jet pilots.
Well, you know, in that line of work, you don't have to live where you're based. That's the wonderful thing. Your commute is from here to Dallas every day, you know, and every, so. And we have around over 200 jobs that are, that are generated here at this airport. And, and the economic impact is, is in the 40 to 50 million through, to the airport, so there-
We actually did an economic impact study not too long ago, and there is, there is a very positive impact for having the airport here.
I'm telling you, this, this kind of conversation creates those thoughts, but-
Chad, can-
Are there parameters?
We need, because we need to move to another topic, but I'd love to say, I seriously would love to say, but can y'all, does this, does this sound, trying to circle it back, I'll give you my opinion, and shake yes or no. I think, I think we have to further other opportunities at the airport. I don't think we, you know, anytime you rely on one user at an airport, whether you're at a bank, or you're a builder, or whatever you are, you're at some point in the situation we're in right now, where we have one user that says, I'm doing that, or I'm not doing that. And we have to have these tough discussions. So my opinion, I think we need a more healthy mix, as opposed to just one tenant that's using everything. And we say, here's what that is. So that way, if we did have, you know, whoever that came in and wanted to base their jet here, that just takes off and leaves, or that we have that traffic that wants to come in, then we have the ability that we can do that. I mean, and not, I don't, my opinion, I don't think we need to be seen as a training airport. We need to be seen as a general aviation airport that also has training schools that are there, just like John Toon. I mean, Toon has several different training programs that are there, but they're not seen as a training school.
And to rephrase that in a manner that will help us with the FAA, is that the market for our airport has changed. And we, as the airport sponsors, the city, can respond to that market. That's permitted under all the regulations and our grant assurances. And so that's what we're trying to do. From a measurement standpoint, you know, I think we have a handle on, I think we're comfortable with what we have. I think it's putting us in a position to hold the line. Maybe the best parameter that we can have now, understanding there are aspects of this, this is a unique facility. We don't have total control of this facility, we just don't. And so we can do certain things, and we have to do them in a certain manner, and we have to phrase them a certain way. But if we can hold the line here, I think we can do what we want to do, and what the mayor just said, and still have MTSU here as long as they want to be here. If they want to move, they can move, and we'll help them with that as well. But we have to, we have to be able to box them in, into the right spot, based on our capacity and our ground. I think that's what we're working very hard to do.
The thought, when we were going to have this meeting, and we invited, we were going to invite Dr. McPhee, was to be able to hear that side of the, what's the consideration in all of these areas that you've mentioned. I would think it would be healthy for us to kind of say, okay, now invite Dr. McPhee to come and address to us. I mean, we need to express what our vision and usage of our airport, what we kind of believe the future of our airport is going to look like, and be able to talk about that from the city's standpoint, from our position. And then I think it would be helpful to hear his dialogue as to what his plans are for the, if the program is intended to grow, how are you going to grow, so that we can make it very clear that the capacity is not here, to handle that growth, if it's beyond what you're presently doing. To get an update as to the relocation plans, where are you with those plans for relocation, so we can kind of understand that? I think those are the two, two, one, one and two questions. And then it seems to be that what I've been hearing is that property maintenance, the aesthetics of your place at our airport needs to be addressed, and we need to get some kind of commitment from MTSU that, that the aesthetics or the property maintenance is going to come to the standard. Since we've made this significant impact into the aesthetics of our, and how we view our airport, what are you going to do while you are here, to be partners, so we upgrade the aesthetics of our, of the property that you're renting from us? And I think having him in front of us to talk about those things would be helpful, as it relates to the airport.
There were two-
The only issue that I have with, with that, what you just said, is that what I keep asking for relates to number one, and that is, we haven't collectively decided what we think the usage should be. We haven't talked about anything as far as how much capacity can they have. So we don't need to have Dr. McPhee in here, so that we can all sit in here and decide, well, what's the capacity going to be? We, we need to make, all I keep asking for is, let's have, what are some parameters that you can kind of give us, that we can then say, okay, well, here's what makes sense. Only 65% of the operations need to be one user, or 30, or 20, whatever the number would be right, whatever the professionals say it ought to be, based on what the city council's vision is for the airport. I'm just kind of saying, I think we should be able to, we should be able to give guidance. And like Ronnie really says on this, I mean, I agree. Once we say, this is what the usage of the airport's going to look like, there's going to be 50% of the operations that are going to be used for flight training, period, max. You know, if that's, I'm saying again, for example, for example-
Rick, I wish that was realistic, but I don't, I just don't think that is possible for us as-
Whatever they say.
Now, maybe the mayor has an understanding, a little bit more than that, but I'm on the commission, and I'm not sure I'm qualified to tell, 50% of our need to be trained.
I'm not saying it's 50%, that's just an example. I've just said, they, they need to come up with some of the parameters, Bill. I'm, you know, we have-
We have the situation that we're dealing with. It's the, it's the building that we're living in, it's the operation of the circumstances that we're dealing with that we need to address, and make them better, continue in the progress that we're making in that relationship. And I think you'll, you'll see an improvement, and you'll see things get better as the relationship gets better. It's not, I mean, it's not just us and them, or us against them, those kind of dialogues are not going to move us in-
Or us against us. We haven't even figured out what it is we want the airport to look like yet.
I don't know if that's, I mean, we are evolving right now. I mean, when we built this beautiful building, we didn't know exactly what the building, what it was going to look like. There are particular things as far as hangars, and what we're doing with some of the new development of hangars in our area, all of that is kind of evolving. And to say, okay, we know exactly what it is, and here's the plan, I mean, I mean, I'll bring up something that kind of fuzzies the water, but before all of this problem with MTSU happened, they had a campus plan that they brought, the airport commission, it was a significant investment that they were going to make.
And to fill, maybe the gap between the two discussions is-
Okay.
Is, what you're, what you're asking for has been worked on, it got sidelined to be able to do this, because if we don't address this situation, our future plan isn't going to have a whole lot of merit. And so you haven't, you haven't seen some of what has been done in some, in some planning aspects, just because we haven't got there yet. But you're absolutely right. I mean, we want to have council to guide us to do there, but we know that unless we address this situation right now, and have this dialogue, that we'll never get there, because still, if they put, if they, if they're at 70%, and they increase their, their fleet by 30%, you know, we can plan the heck out of everything, but it's never going to change. So we had to address this, and I think, I think we're getting there, so that we can come back and have, have that. We can, we can hit, we can hit a number of some kind of operate, we can't send a definitive number, I don't think the FAA would, would get us there, because there's too many variables involved in there. But we can do some practical things on the ground and through leases, in managing it, so that the aggregate number over a long term would hit something like a percentage. That's what you, I think you're asking for, so.
It's very simple. All I'm trying to say about Bill's point is just that, if, Bill, if you're saying what we need to do is tell Dr. McPhee, this is what, you know, we expect, we have to have come to some conclusion of what we expect. Before we do that, is all I'm trying to get at, and I'm just not sure that we-
What would be some of those questions? What, what would be a definitive ask?
I've got, I mean, I think, I think one question would be, okay, is the council want to lease any more classroom space? Because, I mean, ultimately, what's happened is, and Chad will tell you this, there were, there was portables out there that just kept getting, what started this whole discussion December two years ago, was MTSU wanted to bring in additional portable space for classrooms for, to meet their accreditation. And so that's what started this whole conversation, that, you know, Chad, Chad asked a bunch of questions. I'm not going back, but I mean, that's what started this conversation.
As far as that, yeah.
So, so, but if, if we say that we're going to continue leasing, this money, this, this terminal was built with taxpayer dollars, this was not built with funded governmental or state dollars. We, the taxpayer is paying for this building. We don't put it in the pro forma on what our, our interest expense, like, you know, you and I would look at it, Ronnie, to say, hey, here's what our monthly cost is. We don't do that, it just goes to debt service. So, you know, MTSU space is probably not even covering what it costs to build that space. But if we continue leasing space to MTSU, they're sure as heck not going to invest in their campus to build classroom space, because we're doing it for them, the taxpayer is. So, I mean, I think the discussions we need to have are to say, look, that space over there, we're not going to lease that. When that lease is up, we're not leasing other space. We want to lease that. I mean, this building's, this space is used way more than what we thought it was going to be used for. We need that space over there. So, you know, letting them know, you're going to have to start doing those things. I think those are the discussions that the council says, hey, when this, when this, when this space comes up for renewal in six years, I think it's a six-year renewal on the lease, if you're going to stay here, here's what we expect.
Yeah, they've got more on that, and on the campus, they've got about nine years on their master plan, master lease agreement.
I mean, that's the way I look, I look at, and then I look at it too. If Chad comes and says, David, what's his name?
David Byers.
Dave Byers comes and says, look, your capacity in an airport your size, that's one, one runway, that also, so one thing we're not even talking about is that Nashville's Class C, or Class D airspace is getting ready, Class C airspace is getting ready to come over into Murfreesboro, closer to Murfreesboro, it's getting ready to take Smyrna in, which means, that makes it even tougher. Well-
Why does that make a difference? What that means?
Well-
More traffic.
It's, it's just that that controlled airspace is now coming further and further closer to Murfreesboro. And it's, it's a little bit bigger challenge for the pilots to deal with controlled airspace as compared to untowered, uncontrolled airspace.
How? They have to check with somebody when they go through it?
It's much more procedures, it's much more communication, call that with air traffic control.
You couldn't stay here and circle around in Class C airspace. That's why, you know-
Does that help us, if that's going to happen? Are we happy about that, or we're not?
Bill, plus it ain't for getting in the weeds, man.
Never mind. Okay, all right, never mind, never mind.
Get in the flight, man.
Never mind.
Just makes it, Ronnie, it makes it, you know, like the whole-
I can't help myself.
The whole discuss-
All they expressed last night, again.
The whole discussion about their, about originally MTSU going to Smyrna, I mean, I think Chad will tell you this, that was never going to happen, because it's so close to the, to the Nashville Airport, that, I mean, and so as that airspace keeps coming out and growing, like Nashville is growing, well, then that hurts, it doesn't hurt us, it just makes it even more challenging to be able to operate here. So what I'm saying is that if you tell us that the operations for an airport that's our size, one runway, that's completely surrounded by neighborhoods, is 450 operations on average, then we should easily be able to say, here's what we feel like we can, we can, we can give you.
I say again, I'm all about them making those types of parameters.
Yeah.
I just think there need to be some parameters we can then look at and go, we've listened, we think we agree with that, and here's what we think it should be, and then we can then take that to Dr. McPhee and do exactly what you said. Hey, Dr. McPhee, we've listened to the professionals, this is what we think it should look like, this is what we think the airport should quote unquote look like, not, not physically look like, but what the vision for the airport is. And that's the way this airport's going to operate. Now, you can figure out how you're going to work your way into that. You grow all you want to grow, you buy as many planes you want to buy, you get as many students you want to get, but here's what it's going to look like in here, because this is what the taxpayer, this is what we represent the taxpayer, the way we think it looks like.
Agreed.
That's all I'm, I'm not trying to say, like I said, I don't know what the right parameters are. I would rely on them to say what those parameters look like, or whatever the data should be. It should just be that we come together and say, this is what we think the future should be, so that then we can go communicate it with Dr. McPhee, that's all. And then have those next, you know, point two and point three. That's all I, the reason I'm just saying, kind of the us against us, is I just can't, you know, I just don't feel like we've gotten a good handle on it from a council perspective. Because, you know, look, as proud as I am of, of the idea that we've already told them, there is no space for their 10 new aircraft, we also, all this exact body right here said that five of them were going to go away, and they did.
Five aircraft, well, tie downs.
Five tie downs.
Well, they're down, they're technically down 15, they're on, they're on daily rent.
Can we just ask if the number was the same?
The same number of aircraft, the same tie downs, it's just how, how we're looking at them as far as-
We can't, we cannot deny them tie downs, but we can tell them that you don't have monthly rent for them. So if another plane shows up and needs this tie down, you're not, you're not there, he's going to take the tie downs. You may land and not have a tie down, and that's a risk to them, they don't like that. That's why they reacted so poorly to the tie down things. But, but that's, that's what we've done, and so we can't say no tie downs, because tie downs exist, we can't deny it.
I get it. I don't want no tie downs, I was just talking about a percentage, or a lesser number, or whatever it was that we had all talked about on the past. My point is just to say, whatever those things look like, then we should have some agreement on whatever it looks like and move on.
I think there were two significant things that happened on this airport, as far as beautification and the appearance. One was the terminal, it was a great, great call. Second one was, we cleaned up the maintenance shack at McKnight Park, which was their front door to their campus. Once the shack went away, we cleaned that up, it, it made that campus look a lot better. Now, they need to have the rest of their campus reflect that cleanup as well.
Okay. Chad, will you, will you come to us, you and Craig come to us with some discussion points that need to reflect what Bill was talking about. I mean, these are easy to be able to talk about, growth, relocation, and aesthetics, but we're going to have to have an overall talk on future direction, and, you know, like what Ronnie said, that maybe, you know, we're, the difference between the university and the airport is, this is one of the only places that the university functions on something that they don't own or don't have control of. But it's crazy to think, the nursing school, for example, talking to Gordon Ferguson, they can only put out so many nurses, because they only have so much space for labs. So it should be pretty easy to say, if you only can have so many nursing students for space, then you should be able to look and say, this is how much space we got for, for pilots. So that's something you are going to have to come back to us on. Hey, can we-
Can't we have that, I mean, quite honestly, shouldn't we be able to have that conversation with the president of the university? I mean, I mean, does, does it mean that we have to have a definitive document that says, I mean, to me, this general conversation, people trying to find what is the right thing to do with the president of the university, doesn't, that doesn't seem like a weakness. And, and, you know, we all realize, we're trying to figure out what is right for the university, what is right for our city. And I think having him address some of our concerns, as they relate to public safety, as they relate to growth, to have him talk and answer some of these questions, to hear what, what's on your brain. And then if we have reactions like what we've done today, off the cuff, that we individually want to make, then if there's a definitive document, it can come through the airport commission, through Chad and the airport commission, that will come to us, this- will come to us, this, can, this document of definitive rules will come to the city council. But I, I don't see how just this, okay, we're going to talk about our general relationship with the university and your thoughts, and, you know, to hear that publicly expressed, what each of us have probably heard on the telephone from the president of the university, we've probably heard the very thing. I'd just love to see it publicly stated that we're willing to listen to each other.
I love that.
I mean, I, I think that's a positive thing.
Bill, I think, I agree with what you're saying. I think what Rick is saying is totally true. We need to put something on paper like we have in the past giving to MTSU, but they have not responded, just like tonight. If we're in a partnership, we have no representatives from MTSU. That's a problem. The president's not here, provost's not here. There should be one representative.
They would have been here, one of those would have been here if you, if we'd asked.
It should have been somebody. It doesn't matter who it is. It should have been somebody.
They asked, he asked if he could send somebody, a provost or one of them.
Yeah, Shane's enough email. Yeah, we, we kind of shut that down so that we could have this conversation, because I mean, here's the, I guess what we need to do is try to figure out, do, are we still at a spot right now where we're going to just sit down with Dr. McPhee or MTSU, the board of trustees, whoever, and we're going to have, let them have input into what happens with the airport? I mean, I'm pretty certain they're going to say, we need as many operations as we can get, as much space as we can get, but do, or, or do we want to try to have some sort of something that we're trying to figure out what we want the airport to look like?
I think we need to know, we need to know what we want the airport to look at first.
What do you want, Bill? I mean, let's just, let's get this over with, or do we want him to give up some parameters that we can kind of try to build out and say, hey, this is what we kind of think it is? Or do we just want to get in a room and talk about this some more?
I'm tired of talking.
I mean, we, you want to get some parameters together or not?
I'm really tired of talking. We've been talking about this for the last two years. I mean, it takes, we keep talking about partnership, it takes two to make a partnership. But we, we, we've not heard anything from Dr. McPhee. We've all had conversations with Dr. McPhee. We keep talking about there's new leadership with MTSU, but yet we ain't heard anything about upper management and leadership. What are they doing? That's who's going to make the decision. So we can talk, we can talk until we blue in the face. I doubt if I get blue, but. We, this, we have to move on. This is our airport, and we control what we do at our airport.
If you don't know what the words look like, you're going to hit it every single time. So if you don't have a clear plan about what our vision is, we can identify the vision to Dr. McPhee to even all be on the same page. So we got to put a target out there and say, look, this is what our target's going to look like, and then we need to shoot to hit the target, and we invite McPhee to shoot the target also.
Absolutely.
This is what we want it to look like. We would love for us, for MTSU to be a partner in this vision, and if MTSU would like to be a partner in this vision, this is what it's going to look like, let's go. If you don't want to be a partner in this vision, and you need another target, we'll help you get to the other target. But we need to know what we want it to look like before we go any further. I, I know, personally, I'm not saying I don't want MTSU as a partner, I would love to have MTSU as a partner, but we need to all be happy and be a beneficial partner for everybody, not just a one-sided partner, this side or any, win-win for everybody.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I think that's what we, I, I mean, I, I feel bad about it because I, I feel, I don't want the council to feel like I drug us into this. I mean, I was sitting where Ronnie was sitting there, and, I mean, my exact words, I think I used were, hey, you know, the council will have a vision, and MTSU has to decide if they want to share that vision moving forward, and that didn't go very well. But, I mean.
Ron?
I don't, I would not find any reason to disagree that we need to preserve the capacity of our airport for citizens of Murfreesboro. I think where I have a little more trouble is defining who that is and how MTSU fits into that. I think I look back at the history of, of what MTSU has meant to the airport, I don't think we can ignore that. I don't, and I'm not suggesting anybody is trying to ignore that. But, but I do think that rears its head, or we show that in terms of how we make this decision. So, for example, if we say, you know, again, not to rehash this stuff, but, you know, we're talking about the operations, airspace expansion, how people use the airport, people flying in and out, but we're also talking about tie downs and where you put planes, and so those are two different things. Even if MTSU doesn't do touch and goes here, we still have an issue with how many, how much capacity they're using of the tie downs. I think you have to work that down. I think you do that in a cooperative spirit by asking, by telling them, we don't have to renew the leases. But I don't think you say, hey, your, your aerospace program that is renowned, and we can have commentary on that about how renowned it is if we want to, but it, it is pretty well-known as a top aerospace program, where you say, you got to be out in 27 seconds, get your stuff and go. So, I mean.
And we never.
I know, I'm just making an exaggerated point. I'm saying, giving them time to fit that vision that we have in, in consideration of what they've meant to Murfreesboro and what they've meant to the airport.
Yeah.
So set the boundary.
Hundred percent. I mean, look, that's, that's, I, I, I don't say that because I think it goes without saying. Look, if we, if we all got together and said, this airport, we think should be commercial airport only, okay? No flight training, zero. If we, if we all collectively, or four of us said, zero flight training ever again at this airport, I don't think any of us would say that's tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? Like, yeah, I, I think we would have to have some kind of reasonable way, I'm not saying that's what, I'm, that's the most extreme example I could come up with to make the point, right? But if we, you know, whatever that vision looks like, with the help of staff coming up with, the people who are professionals at this to come up with and tell us, hey, look, this is what we think might be a good mix for Murfreesboro, this fits this, this fits that, this takes into account MTSU and their flight training, and what we need, and we do need to keep, you know, supporting that as much as we can, they're going to have a much better idea of what the happy medium looks like than I am. I just know we need to say, this is what we expect the happy medium to be, so that then we can then communicate it over to, to, to MTSU and kind of go, hey, look, this is what we expect it to be. I mean, look, y'all, three years from now, it could be total different council up here saying it should, it is going to be all commercial, or it could be total different leadership at MTSU, have, already have something built and doing something different. We don't know that, but for where we sit today, I feel like it's our job to say, this is what we expect, so that we can effectively communicate with MTSU to what our expectations are.
That's why I think it's more important, the relationship, to spend some time on the relationship.
I agree with that.
So that, as opposed to this idea of definitive, because I, I wish it was possible, and it sounds like, I mean, yeah, let's just know exactly what, what we want, our vision, and be specific as to what we want our airport to look like. This thing is so dynamic, it, it changes all the time. It, it is such a, it's not something that you're going to be able to have measurables that's like taking your temperature, okay, it's 98.6, you're okay.
Relationships are measurable. I mean, dude, we've been back and forth for two years with this relationship, and we can sit here and talk about how much we love each other.
But, but there's some, we've identified the problems. One of the problems was that we hadn't done data collection to be able to clearly explain what the problem was. We were saying, there's a lot of people, we're getting a lot of calls, and council's getting a lot of calls, but now we've got things that tell us, and I'm visually looking at what the traffic looks like, and it's scary sometimes, like, when you, when you look at all the planes that are in, in pattern. But, but, so what I'm saying is, this is going to be an evolving answer. The, the evolving solution to what we're talking about is something that is going to be based on a little bit of trust and a little bit of, I guess, Alzheimer's, where we forget what somebody did before and actually moves in a positive direction. Trust people. If Dr. McPhee was here to tell us that I plan on moving, this is a public statement, I'm making the commitment to you that we're not going to grow at your airport, that helps clarify for me what we've talked about, because he's made that commitment publicly. I, I don't think, as we develop what that vision is, because it will evolve over a period of time. It's not something that a piece of paper is going to tell us some definitively, I'm not sure we would all agree on that. I think the issue is, we, we need to develop that relationship, be in dialogue with them, and then tell them our concerns, and then over, we will develop what that vision is. We'll become something important. Now, I mean, we can take a hard line if that's, if that's what the council wants to do, you know, if there's four of us that want to say, we're going to not meet with them until we have a definitive plan, I mean, I'll, I'll go along with it, I, I probably won't vote for it, but I, but, because I don't think that's the tact to take when you're trying to negotiate with somebody in good faith. That is not the tact that I see is definitive. When you have two big institutions, city government and MTSU, that are joined at the hip, I think they need to have a relationship of collegial relationship. I think that we need to talk to each other as partners and, and deal with that in a, and, and yes, it hasn't been, it's been a one-sided issue, I think, but it's not that way anymore. We've moved in a positive direction, and good things are happening. I think nurturing that and encouraging that can be beneficial in helping us move forward in this. Other than that, I'm, I'm not so sure, because all it's going to be, when we go to these other issues, it's going to be you, MTSU are the problem, you, MTSU are the problem, and I don't think that moves us in a positive direction.
I just think, look, I just think that there is a problem, and is, the more we sit here and talk about how much we love each other, and how great the partnership is, and all that, when really, nobody's working with each other until, until somebody gets, until somebody gets boxed into a corner or whatever. I'm not in for boxing people in, I, I, I'll just say that right now. I'm in for us setting our vision for the things that we want to see in this city, and then what happens from there happens. I'm cool with it. I mean, here, so, so it segues into all this stuff, and if this was, if the airport was the only thing that we've been talking about for the last three years as it relates to MTSU, you know, this whole relationship idea would be maybe a little different, because we'd be able to look at this and go, okay, yeah, it finally has changed and everything's good, but the reality is, there's a pattern of how we deal with the other things on this list with them. And again, I said it at the very beginning to make sure and make this very clear, my intentions in this meeting right here is to say, what can we do as a city council as it relates to any issue that there is that we think MTSU would be involved in? Just like we do with developers when it comes to planning. We set the planning parameters, the developers then come in and work within those parameters, right? Or some, some do some, try not to, whatever, and we have to deal with it.
Can I, Bill, can I make a, I sort of shot.
That discussion with McPhee, if there was a vision in place, may help McPhee and the relationship both, because then they can look at their strategic planning and what their college needs to look like about, okay, well, MTSU or Tennessee, Murfreesboro is going to allow us to have X amount of tie downs, X amount of takeoffs, everything like that. We don't have to move our full operation to XYZ airport. We can keep our base in Murfreesboro and do X amount out of Murfreesboro, we can do X amount out of Telemah or Shuttles, Oldham, wherever, and it may help them with their whole strategic plan for their college of aerospace. Instead of just going, we've got to move out of Murfreesboro and move somewhere else, we can show that, hey, we don't necessarily want you to move, this is just what we see you need to use. Does this work with your plans? Instead of everybody kind of shooting off the hips and we want to grow, we don't really, we don't have the capacity for you to grow, well, what can you, what can you do as far as capacity? Well, we don't really know, because we, we have no idea. If we know what our capacity is, it's easier to have that discussion. It's easier to negotiate and have a conversation than you have a fatter conversation.
Bill, can I, can I sum it up?
I wish somebody would.
I think the organizational structure they have is very similar to what we have, but the relationships that we have, I mean, like, I listened to Ronnie on the radio last week. I didn't agree really with anything that Ronnie said on the radio, but I still like Ronnie, and I still, I'm still going to talk with Ronnie. The part that I am frustrated about is, you know, I graduated from that university, I was the student body president of the university, and somehow throughout these discussions, y'all asked me, the staff asked me to sit down with the airport, so I sat down with the airport, sat down with them. Four years ago, I was asked to go sit down to talk about crime around, around the campus when we were having all, all these shootings, and that's back when Rob Lines was here. So we went over, we went through these things. So we, we were tasked to put together a student, a crime-free housing initiative. Those two guys worked their ass, worked their butts off and put together a crime-free program, and we couldn't get the university to participate. So I'm the bad guy when that happens because we're saying there's crime around campus. So then we go to meet with the airport, and we see the issues, and now the spin machine gets started, and we're not being good partners at the airport. Then we get the community things that come across about buying rental houses, and Greg tries to work with the campus and says, hey, well, what's your plan on these? We just don't need to have, we don't allow slum lords. So then, we're not being cooperative because they want to buy land. 2018, we're having the, the White Lives Rally, those guys are on the front lines when we're worried about people getting shot or hurt out there, and you know what the call we got? Hey, y'all mind taking down our MTSU banners around the square, because we really don't want to have the narrative out there while those people are protesting? And I'm like, no, I'm not calling the police and asking them to take those banners down because they're worried about not getting hurt. So somehow, if we're going to partner, I'm all for partnering, but Dr. McPhee or whoever is going to sit there, what's happened is, there's this narrative set that individually, we can't, we have these discussions as a group, and we can agree or disagree and talk about what direction we're going to have, but they don't want us to get together and have this conversation collaboratively, because then you can't just go one-on-one with individuals and try to create strife. So I'm totally fine having these conversations and asking that, but somebody's got to show up and us do it. And I don't want us to be the bad guy for just saying, hey, we may not agree with what you're doing. And that doesn't mean we don't love the university, it doesn't mean that we're not proud of the university, it just means we may have different philosophies. So I'm all, like, today, do you think in any world that it was a coincidence that the economic benefit came out for MTSU when we're having the meeting today? Was that a coincidence? No. So what I would just say, stop all the BS, and let's work to fix these problems, and if you don't want to partner, just say, look, we're fine with our little area, and you guys run your city, but I would rather just know. I'd rather just know, we, either we want to partner or we don't want to partner.
So far, so far, I think I know. So that's where I'm at. I mean, that's, that's why, and you may say I may need more patience or grow up or whatever it is, but after about three years or five years worth of having discussions and getting stonewalled and getting told spin and untruce and save this to me one day and this to me the other day, I learned my lesson on that stuff, and that's not how I deal with people. If you're going to, if you tell me something and do something different multiple times, my patience runs out. That's just how it is. And again, if Ronnie is saying, let's, you know, if we set our vision, if we got 33, you know, then what's the problem? I, I, I don't know, that's a pretty good question, other than there keep being a problem in the future every time that we say, we think we've got the problem fixed, you know? So it just keeps coming back to this same thing. We keep going around in circles over and over, and so, yes, I have kind of lost, lost my patience with it. And do I think, I mean, anything that I've ever asked for as it relates to, you know, when we're, if we're going to segue into this crime thing, I don't know if we've gotten anywhere, but it looked to me like we ought to at least rely on Chad and his staff to at least come up with some ideas for us to consider. Can we all at least agree on that before, I, I would say that's before we go see Dr. McPhee, and we'll segue into crime, maybe get it knocked out faster since we've kind of, I mean, are we at least all comfortable with letting the professionals put some things together, whether that's operating procedures and, and any other ideas that you think fit what we're talking about? Are we?
I've got one other little comment to make, and it goes to what Shane said about the capacity that we have in one single user using that capacity. I do think, trying to think long-term, not just about what we're dealing with today, now's the time to define how much of that capacity we want anybody to have. And so, for example, if we're saying, hey, 70% is out of line, what is out of line? Well, to me, following that same argument, I don't know that you want anybody to have more than 25% capacity of the airport.
And so I know that's a big a big change. And I'm not trying to say, again, I'm exaggerating, hey, MTSU, you gotta be out in 30 seconds. You're gonna lose, you know, 16 and a half tie-downs in 30 seconds. And I'm not saying we're saying that. But we gotta be realistic if we allowed somebody to grow to the point where they had 70% capacity. It's our local university. It's not our problem to solve that issue. It's not our problem how much they grow the program. That's their business. It's not ours. But we can clearly say, we decided, I'm not, I don't know how much it should be, 25% is the max we're willing to do. Here's a timeline that we think is reasonable.
Maybe eight years.
Whatever.
If they say they're gonna build something, they got eight years.
But you're gonna know that easy if we don't have to.
That's right.
That's my point, that once we communicate that, we hope you grow 10,000 students in the pro pilot program. Awesome.
All right. So you agree with me exactly. We're we're like straight, right, like perfect.
With the caveat that it can't be in 30 seconds.
I'm all about, no, I've never said anything like that and never would.
And I'm exaggerating. I'm just making the point.
Yeah, I never say anything any near that. I mean, literally, I would say eight years.
I'm sure I heard you say it. I'm just saying, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, and Ronnie, what I wanted to tell you, just, I'm not trying to take up for Chad, but that's exactly where this conversation started two years ago. Exactly. That's that's, that's exactly the comment was to say, hey.
Well, I've never heard anybody say that but me, so.
No, I I I promise.
And I've never heard anybody say that but me. So I'm gonna take credit for it.
Yeah. So Chad.
Chad doesn't feel that way.
So Chad, if you'll come if you'll come to us and tell us, I mean, this is what you feel, unless, take, take all the operational stuff aside, how much should one tenant be in control of the airport? Y'all come back and tell us that, and we can say from there, we at least will start the discussion, Bill, to say, because, I mean, here's the other part, too. We're telling people you can't grow with sewer capacity right now. It's not like that we're not dealing with this in other issues, but you can't expect your airport to grow if we if we just say, okay, look, we're fine where it is right now.
It's just like, it's just like that. If they keep growing, it's gonna go from 70 to 90% and it's just, you know, that's just the way it's gonna be.
And one one thing to keep in mind is this, in this industry, in aviation, and right now at this time in our nation, there's a demand, a high demand for pilots. And that's what that's what is prompting this.
But if y'all hadn't read, that high demand also is why Delta, you know, who MTSU has partnered with, Delta passed a thing two weeks ago where you don't have to have a college degree to be a pilot anymore.
It was a requirement by Delta Airlines that you have a college degree to fly for their airlines. They are in such a pickle to get pilots. Now, requirement has become a recommendation.
Awesome. That's awesome. So, anyway. All right, so, hey, can we, can we, we quickly get to Greg on university property acquisition? Because I think this is something that, and you talk about Dr., you know, the discussion, this is, I hadn't seen this until Greg was filling out the application.
Thanks, Chad. Remind me to never allow you to open up for me anymore.
Chad, Chad gets the Darren Gore Award today, so.
Right.
Before Greg's.
Hey, this isn't over yet, Greg. This ain't over yet, buddy.
I know, right.
Just just to put some context on it, that's the MTSU campus. What's in yellow is what they call their acquisition zones, where they want to buy property. What's circled on there, which is not part of their, I added it, is the areas where there is residential property that may be of some concern.
Yeah. And so, so what Craig has just said, why that's important, as you guys know, we just finished our future land use map update. And so, we didn't realize until we actually got the request from MTSU about acquiring property on Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Main Street, how this rubs up, their master plan rubs up with our master, with our future land use map. So if I could just go through the scenario that the mayor's talking about, the mayor's correct in the fact that MTSU has to submit to their their executive subcommittee of the state building commission a request to acquire property. Part of that submission, they have to, they have to contact the city of Murfreesboro to ask us to provide acknowledgement and feedback on them purchasing the property. November the first, we received a call for from MTSU or email from MTSU to acquire property on Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Main Street. November the second, responded back to MTSU that we could not support, the planning department could not support that request due to the fact that MTSU has several properties, which we have some pictures of, that are residential rental properties and disrepair, disrepair, substandard, and also at sometimes empty. They also have a church that they're using for storage. Some buildings are boarded up. On the 15th of November, Mr. Bill Waite, the vice president of MTSU's planning department, reached out to me and said, hey, we're gonna get it fixed. We're actually meeting with the property management company to get get those items fixed. I haven't heard back from him. What I'm sharing with you guys, with you guys today is the opportunity, as we move forward with our future land use map, that these areas rub up against and don't coincide with what we're planning for the future land use map that we have updated right now. I shared that with Mr. Waite, that those are conversations that it would be great for us as a city and as MTSU to have as it relates to. They have a master plan that expands wide to Middle Tennessee Boulevard, from Middle Tennessee Boulevard to Rutherford, from Greenland to Highland. So they have a wide area in their master plan that they're looking to acquire land in. And so those opportunities will continue to roll up against our future land use map. So there are a couple of opportunities. One is the MTSU's master plan and the city's future land use map doesn't match up. Land banking is a process that MTSU is using right now. They're acquiring land right now for the future, but not utilizing that property that they're using. So they acquire the residential property all around the, in their acquisition area. And with that, it looks like this until they get ready to utilize this. The opportunity is that we don't know when that's going to be. So this property can look like this for five to 10 years until they actually get ready to put their master plan in place. The other, the other opportunity is it would be better for them to scrape this property, leave it green, leave the lots empty, so that we don't have to have substandard inspections, continue to look at this property in this in this manner until they actually do something with the property. So a couple of opportunities. One is the land banking. How do you better utilize the land banking process that they're currently using? And then also, how do we work together as it relates to the future land use map for the city of Murfreesboro as well as their their master plan moving forward? So I recommend that we we have quarterly update meetings with MTSU since since this is kind of what we're talking about, how do we better utilize the partnership and and move forward? This is, this is off of Rutherford. This is a parking lot. I think we talked about another parking lot not being gravel. And now this has turned into a dump site for construction debris.
And I would, I drive by there just because where I live all the time. And over the last two or three years, there's always something stored on that lot, whether it's some kind of delivery, whether it's debris, whether it's something is using that lot. The location of the lot is right across the street, is where MED spent a full lot of money at the university's assistance to build that substation at a very high standard. Street from the very nice parking area that they built. So it made sense at the time, but then across the street, they put no concern or care or anything into what they, how they maintain that lot, just across the street from there. And it's been that way for, wow, six years since I lived in the neighborhood where I drop passes all the time.
Open for any questions.
Are you okay with that direction with Greg and them working with the land use map?
I think one of the things, so I didn't know anything about this. This is the first I've heard of this. I don't know anything about the new land use map. And so before we start having conversations with MTSU about it not matching the new land use map, I'd at least like to see it and for us to have some conversation about it.
Yeah, I think, I think we would, Ronnie, we probably just use them as another stakeholder in in the process. We we brought other stakeholders in, civil engineers, developers, so we could make them a part of that, but absolutely, I could share that as quick as possible.
Was that quarterly meeting recommendation received?
And I'm only sharing that with with council at this time as a way of moving forward, Bill, just to to not only say that there is an opportunity, but how do we, how do we to provide a suggestion of how we fix it.
All right. I guess, looking at the houses that are in disrepair, that that may be a bigger macro issue than just MTSU. I mean, you can drive around town and look at rental properties all over town that are in major disrepair. Some of them are owned by, bought up by the same person. So so if the disrepair rental properties, I mean, it'd be a bigger macro issue than just MTSU.
I think the the opportunity, Sean, is is that we're doing that on a daily basis and building codes or issuing those. We have tried to partner a little bit more sensitive with MTSU, and and now it's becoming more of a more of an opportunity. So it's happening all over the city, you're correct. But now we're seeing opportunities. Well, we actually asked to demo, we were gonna demo, the city was gonna demo a house for them, and it and that became very, very complicated to to provide free demo. And so it it just is time to sit down and and come up with a plan.
Why did it become complicated?
They didn't want us to do it, and thought.
Well, yeah, they, yeah, we offered, I'd offered Dr. McPhee to tear down the two houses down at the end of Main that's just lighted, really. And and this may be just because they have to do this, but it was a long time, we'd made several inquiries on it, they didn't seem to have a lot of interest in it, and they came back and asked us to do a few things that, you know, we couldn't do. And then we got an agreement that just asked us to do all kinds of, you know, things, indentifications and figuring out things that we wouldn't normally tear out or anything else. And like, I just wanted to clear the lot for you because we could do that with no cost and take it to landfill, and it would save you all the expenses. And we couldn't get there. And like I said, it may be that they just, their process just requires that. But if that's what they require, I think the point is, unlike other, I mean, there are landlords that do key property in substandard conditions, but that's what they do, they do landlords. This is a university. They're not in that business.
I'm not.
Yes. I mean, they they buy these things and they can't possibly make enough money on this to make any difference whatsoever to their budgets. You know, like Greg said, you spend a little bit of money, clear the lot, if you want to land bank it, got that, that's, you know, great, because you're gonna expand the university, that's wonderful. But in the meantime, you know, why are you kind of letting us destroy a community when you don't really need it? It's not your business, it's not adding anything.
Well, I I'm gonna say I agree with Ronnie a little bit on this, just from a standpoint of, I don't really know. Are we talking about land that's outside of the current campus that they're buying only that that.
No, they have, so for example, something in our land use map for that particular.
I don't think the, I'm not saying that that we should regulate what they do. I think it's good for us to share, both share, what what future land use map looks like, what their master plan is, just to just to know what those areas, a great example is Main Street. Right now, that Main Street area, our future land use map update proposal says that that's a single-family residential detached. And and that's butting up with a lot of the commercial that's on their master plan. So there wouldn't be a transition in that area, just to be able to understand what those boundaries look like. It's the only thing.
Are we talking about from a stand, I mean, and I understand this correctly, say, for example, hey, look, this is zoned a particular way up there. You guys are buying all this property with the idea that you might do something different.
Commercial.
Well, by the way, our land use plan says it's supposed to be residential, or this is what, you know, this is to be residential, so you kind of ought to know that before you buy more.
Or I'm just saying, we just update. I think it's just great to be transparent about what where the city's headed and then where they're headed, just to talk about it. I don't think we're trying to dictate anything at this point, but I do believe it's.
Or what they buy in the future, it might help them.
I think my question was, so we have a new land use plan?
No, we're using, I'm only using it as a stakeholder. Right now, we have a put-together planning, took it to planning commission for a public hearing on, last night for the public hearing, March the 16th. We're just going through the process right now. We're only bringing in stakeholders that the future land use map impacts, like we've been doing with the civil, with with everybody else.
So you won't bring it to council?
It will come to council, yes.
Why would you meet with MTSU before it comes to council?
Because they're a stakeholder.
Just a stakeholder.
Yeah.
So you're not saying, hey, we're gonna tell you what you can and can't do.
We're just.
We're saying, we want to get input, we want to have a conversation.
Absolutely. Because if not, Ronnie, we're here again.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, we're here again if we don't have the conversation. So stakeholders that are using the, utilizing the future land use map, we've tried to bring them all in and sit down and share with them.
Yes, so I think there's two points. So the land use, as you come in, I mean, if the university buys it, it's a state agency, and we zone it residential, and they turn it to commercial, there's not much we can do about it. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna be. So we want to coordinate that. But the other thing is, if you're gonna buy it and you're buying it to bank it, that's fine, but let's keep it in a condition that really helps the community. That's what we're asking you for. That's what we want to have the conversation.
Well, and I mean, we require that of developers, too. If you've got, if you've got different sections of a subdivision, we don't let you just, I mean, you've got to maintain it, so.
And the other point, Ronnie, they really don't have to work with us. So it's a whole, it benefits us to be able to share the the vision of Murfreesboro with them because they could develop it, MTSU, without without much say-so from us.
And you're saying because the current zoning is in place, if they buy it, it's entitled the way it is?
Zoning doesn't, I mean, they get to do what they want to do. Zoning doesn't matter.
They can ignore it.
And but the other, the other part that goes sort of along with this, as we're talking about land use, is really infrastructure. I mean, we know in that Rutherford Boulevard area, we've already got significant sewer limitations, so it would be good for, you know, to have that discussion on what we can handle.
East Main is a great example, Mayor, because the further you get down to East Main, we don't have capacity. We're not even taking in new development.
All right, any questions for Greg? All right, the next one I had on the list was high-density off-campus housing. And I think, Greg, yep?
Well, yeah, I think I think part of that bleeds into some of the, we want to talk about crime and where that's located in the city, but generally, as a background, before we get there, is I asked Gerald Lee on the GIS to pull up some multifamily, and that's that's the information he was able to pull off GIS, which I think is pretty accurate. It's about, we're about, what, 40% in student housing? So the housing, I can't tell you, students live in every house on, or every multifamily on here, but this is within two miles of the university. So essentially, it's either marketed as or developed as or contains quite a bit of student housing. And frankly, I think if it contained all the students and was controlled as a dorm or some type of facility, it would have a different aspect of it. And that probably is a good touchstone to get to the crime-free housing and the and the crime issues that we have and where they're located around MTSU. I'm gonna go to a map chief, and I'll be first.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As staff has looked at allocating resources for the future, we pretty much did an overlay of the entire city and, you know, the 60-plus square miles or approximate 60 square miles of the city. We keep coming back to this central point, and that that is the area that you see around MTSU campus. You see that we've broken it down into a one- and two-mile radius. And a lot of the area you see highlighted in yellow would be the new Last Gases Pike, that row of complexes there. Then the lower right, that circle right, in that lower right section you'll see will be those apartment complexes along Rutherford Boulevard. You've got some areas to your left around the interstate, and then you have some areas around State Street, Sevier Street, those areas as well. But what we've found is consistently that a majority of our crime issues are occurring within this area that's been identified on the map. You're seeing a large portion of our property crimes, a large portion of our violent crimes, and overwhelming majority of our homicides happen in this area. And that that's traditionally, and that goes back several years. It's not just a recent phenomenon. So what staff is doing right now is we are looking at how to allocate future resources for that area. I know that we'll be coming to you to put some things in place that will hopefully help us fight crime in those particular areas. I know that those areas are not solely students, but there is a large population, I think, from the previous map that shows that there is a huge student population represented in those areas. So as we do that, we also want to continue our partnerships. I know that Lieutenant Hay is with me tonight, and he I know that Lieutenant Hay is with me tonight, and he has done a pretty good job at, he's done a great job, let me take that back. Yeah, yeah, I don't want to sell him short, yeah, at working on the crime-free housing program. And I know that originally, back in 2017, when we had a lot of the homicides in some of the student housing areas near campus, I know that that program was pretty important to us. We thought that it could benefit us in a lot of ways, but unfortunately, I don't think that it has worked out the way that we want it to. We're still open to modifying that program and getting some kind of, something in place where it benefits not only the students, but just the residents in general in those areas, and get some kind of cooperation between these multi-housing units and, and the police department and the people that live there. So, it's a, it's a work in progress, it's something that we're committed to. I know also that, that there's some technology that we're looking at and some, some additional resources, staff-wise, we're looking at creating a new zone in that area and staffing that to address some of those crime issues. Any questions you might have, I'd be glad to answer.
If we talked about, a couple of years ago, I think we even went, Mayor, the Mayor of Chattanooga, I can't remember what his last name, Andy Burke, I think was his name, but they, you know, they had started this program in some of their high-crime areas where it was the license tag, the license tag recognition program that Smyr, or Laverne just, is it Laverne or Smyrna just put it in place?
I know several cities have, I know Lebanon, what's the recent name?
Yeah.
The recent city?
But it was the virtual policing unit, like, outside of some of these complexes that are, you know, you're having issues, they would put a virtual camera that, you know, you could get a lot, a spot shot, or some of those things. What did we ever decide on doing some of that?
Part of what you see is, is some of the work that we've been doing in identifying areas to put some of that technology.
Yeah.
I know the LPR technology and the camera technology is something that will be coming to you here in the very near future, asking for approval for some of those items. I know that we have looked through our building at City Hall, at the police department, and I know we have identified an area which mimics what you're talking about in Chattanooga with the Real-Time Crime Center, and we're wanting to do the same thing. I know last year, we put some staff positions in the budget, they were approved, and we're in the process of getting those individuals hired to help manage the information that we received at that center.
One of the things that I, you know, that occurs to me, and I have had other conversations, and we've all had conversations, but the way that I kind of have framed this in my mind is, you know, I think we have all kind of anecdotally heard that a lot of this crime is related to either MTSU students, either the students themselves, or they were a student last year, or the year before that, or they're here living with a student, you know, that kind of a thing. And, and again, I'm saying that I think we've, we've sort of heard this stuff anecdotally. I guess, kind of two things that stand out to me is, number one, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Mcfee about this, and about the idea that, hey, there's kind of this separate set of rules. You know, you get an 18-year or 19-year-old kid, moves out of their house for the first time, they live on one side of Greenland Drive, and they've got a totally separate set of rules than they do if they're living on the other side of Greenland Drive on the campus, right? And kind of my longstanding example of this is, you get caught with a sack of weed on this side of Greenland, you're kicked out of school, you're gone. You get caught with a sack of weed on the other side of campus, same exact dude, woman, whatever, it's a hand slap or whatever, and MTSU never knows about it. Well, Dr. Mcfee said, you know, oh, yeah, we have, like, basically a J-board, is how I remember, this has been probably three years ago now, so forgive me a little bit, but, but some sort of J-board, that anytime there's, you know, students involved with something, that they have to be answered, they have to answer for that in front of some sort of judicial ward at the university level. And I asked him at that time, well, you know, so, how many of those hearings were there? I'm pretty certain he said three in the prior year. And I have a hard time believing that there was only three students who got in trouble, you know, in any given year. And I, I don't know what I'm, you know, again, again, this is somewhat anecdotal, somewhat just what he told me, and I'm trying to find out what the reality is, of what is our process? Do we, can we track, you know, where this is coming from so that we really do, instead of just looking at it geographically and making some assumptions or presumptions, in addition to some anecdotal things that we get told of, you know, well, this is stu-, I mean, look, and this is, well, you know, part of this goes to that separate set of rules. Dr. Mcfee was not open to discussing, at that time, you know, would there be some way to have, you know, extension of that, of that set of rules? If you're a student, then you're expected to be at this level of behavior, whether you live on that side of Greenland Drive or on this side, and I don't know what the legalities of that are, I'm not saying I know the exact solution, but it just seems that there could be a solution. Do you guys know what the process is when, if an MTSU student gets in trouble? Drugs, violence, weapon speed, whatever, I mean, does any of that get back to MTSU?
It would depend on the circumstances. I know early on, back when, in 2017, when a lot of these discussions started, I know that was one of the points that was brought up, hey, is there a mechanism to get the, if you did have a student offender, to get that reported to MTSU so that they could take whatever actions they wanted to, as far as the university was concerned? I don't know how many we sent over, I think it would have been more than three?
Yeah, and, yes, in the beginning of the program, we sent more than three, probably...
He said, I think there were three hearings. Now, whether we sent more than three, I don't know, but I...
Probably, probably for about the first six months, when the program actually got started, we were sending them reports with identified students.
Hey, here.
Yes, sir.
Move up there to a microphone.
Yes, sir.
That might be easier.
Thank you.
This is on? So, we would, we would send reports for about the first six months of the program's existence, when we could identify the students onto their administration through the police department, and the police department, I guess, would forward it on to MTSU's administration. We never received any feedback from them, so we don't know what was handled administratively and what wasn't. I know we've had some repeat offenders that still identified themselves as students, and I know we've caught multiple athletes that are still athletes, or were still athletes, that have, so, as far as how they're handling it, I don't know.
Yeah, I will say, in fairness to MTSU, they, they are restricted from responding as to, we will, we won't know. I mean, we can only report it in, and they won't report it back to us, and there's federal laws that prevent that.
Well, so, and really, part of my question is, for us to be able to understand and know, you know, I suspect that everybody at this table, and probably everybody in this room, has heard some, some comment that people have made around town to the idea of, well, these people have, you know, the students have come in from out of town, and they're, you know, causing trouble, or whatever, and this is where a lot of this crime comes from. I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is there some data out there that supports that? And I don't know if that means that, are we, you know, how many crimes are committed by 18- to 22-year-old people within a mile or two of the campus, maybe as close as we can get? You know, I, I don't know, but, but at the very beginning, the nexus of all this would be to understand, you know, does it come with the student population? You know, is this heat map heated up right here is a primary reason for that? The student population, I mean, and I'm not trying to lay blame on MTSU, I would say anytime you get a group of 18- to 22-year-olds in a tight spot, you know, there's probably a decent chance there's going to be some, some stuff happening. But we should understand the nexus of it so that we know how to address it, right?
Right.
If, a kind of a part of this pattern I was talking about earlier, if they're not willing to address it in any way, then we got to figure out, well, what are the ways that we can address it if we decide we want to? And that's where I think, again, we all need to be able to say, I mean, I'll give you all an example, at the corner of Greenland, I voted against an apartment rezoning at the corner of old Las Casas and Greenland, a year or two ago, the...
Agarwal.
Agarwal, yeah, I was going to say, serious one, but, yeah, Agarwal. You know, because I don't want to create more space in the heat map. You know, if that's where the heat, if that's where the crime's coming, why would we go zone more property for that? That would be something like with Greg, and, you know, as far as input to what the land use map looks like, I know I've seen prior land use maps that showed a heck of a lot more multifamily housing around the university, which I would totally not be in favor of because of that heat map, right? Because it seems like that's what part of the problem is. So, I guess, you know, where I'm going with this is, is there a way that we can at least track it and get some ideas to, all right, you know, we've identified it, we've said we'd like to partner again with them, on how can we partner, but if, you know, outlining how that partnership should work, is it the problem, is it a part of the problem, whatever, I think we need the data so that we can go back and say, hey, look, this is what's going on, that's good data. You know, that makes it, again, I don't know that that proves anything, I think that gives you a pretty good idea of part of what's going on, but not necessarily. I don't think anybody is going to take that and go, oh, we got to really change policy, you know, here or there.
I mean, the policy, I think we've got to somehow come up with, and Rob Lyons, back years ago, had this comment that when we were having significant issues with the apartment complex that was next to the Discovery School, when it was at Discovery School, and, you know...
Reed's Rogers.
Yeah, Reed's Rogers. And so, you could go, you know, at that point, I remember him saying that he went and met with Mr. Streep, who owned that, and explained the issues were there, and literally, Mr. Streep started crying in the meeting, saying, I don't want my complex to be like that. Well, now, you know, these complexes are owned by Reeds and people that are out of, out of state, so you can't really have that conversation, like the conversation that the guy flew in from Miami when we all met on the Vi apartment complex. I think what we have to come up with, the reason the crime-free housing initiative, I don't think has been as successful, because there's not that significant of an incentive. And if we know that's where the crime that we're, we're dealing with is in that area, how do we incentivize those landowners? Like, right now, I would give, as a city, any incentive we possibly could to get rid of the common area in 250 units that's now 1,000 units, because you've got a separate lease in every room. We know that's where the majority of our issues are coming from. So, how do we go to those owners and say, we're going to give you a tax break, or whatever it is, to convert those units back to traditional apartments that we're not having to service? Or, our older units that are in that area, how do we incentivize the slumlord to upgrade those areas? And that's really a policy discussion to have, I mean, our only tool is, is tax credits, but I would argue that we're probably spending enough right now through, you know, patrolling and other units, that I would love for somebody to come in and say, hey, I'm getting ready to spend a million dollars on this complex, how can the city partner with us?
This is going to be a dumb question, I'm asking it just because I don't know. How many calls does a unit have to have before you could have condemned its additions?
I don't think there's any exacting number, it does have to be pretty substantial, you got to convince the judge that they're going to go in and affect somebody's property rights, so it has, it's, has to be pretty substantial. Now, we did pass an ordinance for, what did we call it, the large gatherings?
Landlord, yeah.
Yeah, and penalized, I think that's been pretty effective, I'm not sure how we've, it's effective enough, but I don't think we've had to use it very much.
I think we used it once or twice.
Yeah, once or twice.
Or we've gone, but...
So, what, I will tell you, having, I don't know where, where your son lives, but you'll probably experience it, but having dealt with some of these apartment complexes around universities, it's two or three months of apartment management, and they're gone. It's, it's a month-to-month budget that they want to meet to get their, their bonus, and then they're gone. It's a REED, and they have large management companies that are showing up here now, because I've seen them, that really don't want to put anything, they just, they want to churn that student apartment complex and put as little into it as they can. So, they have, you have to have a constant pressure on them financially to keep them on track. One of the things on the, on the, the crime-free housing that we, we asked for, and we talked to the university about, is to make sure that when they are recommending housing or providing materials, that they focus on those that, and tell, tell the units that we are focusing on those that are qualified for crime-free housing. But, we got no, we got no response. That was one request we had, we had made, and I think it would have helped probably our crime-free housing unit, because they want to fill these apartments up. And if other ones are getting the recommendations and they're not, that's going to be an incentive for them to spend the money to get there. We can incentivize the cost of it, that was one thing they said, it's expensive to get there, so we can incentivize along, along those lines. There are, there are, we've had a couple, let's see, three units now where people have come in, three large complexes where they've come in, in companies from outside that want to rehab and change from the single occupancy room that is problematic, that you said, and change that whole model, and redo the apartments and upgrade them, and I think that will help some, on, on some of these. And that's, that's happened now three different times, so maybe we'll see more of that, and that'll be good, too. But, you know, the other thing is, is, like Rick said, is restricting probably the construction of these and, and continuing to push MTSU into a dorm situation, whether they build on campus or buy the dorms off. Some of the problem gets dealt with when you limit it to students who are on campus, who face the judicial issues that you talked about on, on campus, and they're, they're locked down and they're restricted, and so they're, you know, the boyfriend can't come and sleep on the couch, and the friend can't come and sleep on the couch and create the trouble, because he's not in school, and he doesn't, he's not doing anything else, and, you know, the hangers-on issue that comes in. Universities, University of Tennessee does, I even saw the University of Tennessee Southern, and one down in Tulaski, requires first-year students to live on campus. So, there are companies that will build dorms or finance dorms, because they know they'll get filled up every single year, because they have a steady stream of tenants that go in there, complying with rules, and having a university that's overseeing it, it addresses those.
It's going to be tough, though, I mean, that's going to be an overall, I mean, that, that's a, I mean, a long-term, I'm not saying it's a long-term solution, but that's, that's going to be a change.
It's a long-term, yeah, it is going to be a change.
What's something that we could do?
It's going to be a change from, from the university's standpoint. Sorry, I'm going to lose it. From the university's standpoint, and what, what they want to do, but there was, you know, in, in, at Arizona State University, there was, next to it, a huge, high-rise apartments that were built off-campus. And it was known, when I was there, as Sin City. That was, it had police cars there all the time, it was, and these are brand-new apartments, I mean, they were nice apartments, they weren't cheap. But, there was a lot of things that 18- to 20-year-olds do that probably is a bad idea that was done there. The university went in and bought that, turned it into dorms, and none of that, all of that disappeared, because they put the rules in, and it stopped everything. So, I, you know, I don't think that, you know, anybody can say, if you look at most large universities, you're going to see some heat around the university, that's just the way it's going to be. But can, is there things that the university can do to address some of that, to make it better? I think yes. And the question is, right now, is, is MTSU doing that, are they willing to have those discussions? And I, so far, we've not gotten a lot of progress from them that would be helpful.
Well, this falls into that category that I knew was going to come up, which is, you know, stepping over that line of telling them how to run their organization versus not doing it, you know, so how can we then, you know, in my mind, as it relates to this, there's kind of two different, you know, two, two things we can do. Number one, we can try to incentivize it the best we can and help...
Right.
...as it relates to, you know, having property to build a dorm on, or whatever, we can try to offer up some of that, if we thought that was a smart use of resources. The other thing is, you know, the microcosm of the airport that we've been talking about the last couple, couple hours, okay, well, what are we going to put in place in that area that is just a vision of how we want our city to look, and whether it's students or not students, they have to, you know, that's going to impact. For example, if we said, you know, and I know this isn't possible, I'm just kind of trying, you know, if we just said, well, we're not going to, we're not going to allow any more multifamily housing within two miles of the university, right? Well, all of a sudden, they then have to, you know, we're not, we're not telling them how to run their university.
Right.
We're just saying, this is what we don't want in this area right here, and then, then they go and, and, and deal with it however they're going to deal with it.
Right.
Just like how they're going to... Just like how they're gonna deal with the number of tie-downs that they have, right? I mean, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna do something that destroys it or anything like that. It might, again, be an eight-year phase or something that, but, but how do we either incentivize or manage the issue so that we don't have the crime issues? I mean, we don't, I mean, it isn't right that we have a place that is the vast majority of all of our violent crime. So do we wanna admit it or not? It's created by probably significantly, I mean, again, without, anecdotally, I guess I should say, 18- to 23-year-olds, they either are in school or were in school a year or two ago. And that's, again, you know, how are we gonna deal with it? Or are we just gonna talk about it that we hate it and we hope somebody does something about it one day? You know, I'm kinda, I wish we were doing something about it.
I think if we could get, one of the things we talked about a couple of years ago was, if we could get the university to partner with us from a standpoint, like, you know, there, there was, it's changed its name a couple of times. I can't remember what the complex is even called now. But, you know, we were having, having significant issues with that complex. And, you know, when I'd go to the basketball game, that's one of the major complexes that was advertising in the Murphy Center. So if there's some way that we could get on with the university, university and our crime group to say, look, these are the ones we're having issues with. We need to be able, through customs or whatever else, with some of the things that we had talked about, to partner to say, hey, okay, let's not advertise with that group or let's find a way that we can, can partner to, to get them going, moving along that line. I forget what the name of that one complex was, but.
It's changed several times. But I, I know, I know one of the issues we, I know that the customs issue, they, they would present those, uh, participants in the crime-free housing program in customs. But the problem is you might have another part of the university that wasn't directly involved in the customs that was allowing advertising for the same unit. So it wasn't consistent across the board.
I would be all for us trying to come up with some overall solution on incentivizing in, I don't know if it's an opportunity district or whatever you call those areas that we can identify where we know there's issues. I mean, very similar to what we did with the Highland study, to incentivize people to, I mean, it's not the university's fault that we have issue, issues on State Street and some of those, those areas. And that's not their fault. But at the same time, we've helped Habitat for Humanity and several other people coming through Planning Commission to be able to, to upgrade those areas. I'm all for planning or whoever fit finding a way to do that.
Yes, related to the crime-free program initiative that we do with the new inventory stock that's come online since that program has been in place.
The what, I'm sorry?
The new, the new inventory that's come online, the housing inventory around the campus that's come online that has participated in that program and is a part of that. I know there's not as much participation as we, as we would like. Is there an, are there identifiable mark, identify, I can't talk, I'm tired. So are there identifiable marks of, hey, here is a program that's in the, or a, a unit that's in the crime-free program? And to be able to kinda overlay that data with other areas around the university that are not participating so that we can show differences in that heat map, within the heat map? Does that make sense?
We could probably pull that. Now, the problem is those, the three apartment complexes, which is, um, owned by that Dr. Agarwal, they, they're much smaller communities. I think when you look, you put all three of them together, they probably equal like one, like student quarters or, um, 15, 40-place. So to, to try to use the numbers and compare that to other properties is gonna be kinda hard when you individually break them up.
Right.
But I do know, um, the occupancy level was much higher than some of those other communities because of the program. And we actually did a story with Channel 3 where we interviewed the, at the, at then the manager who identified her, you know, she was at about a 98% occupancy rate, where other properties were maybe more of like an 80- 85% occupancy rate. So just looking at as far as the people that wanted to live there was greater now. As far as, like I said, the call volume because of the, the number of residents in each individual, uh, complex, it's kinda hard to compare that, um, which I don't have that data for you. But one of the problems when you were talking about incentive to get the properties to continue on with the program, we had a meeting about a year or so after the program had started, just to kinda get some feedback from the managers. We invited MTSU representatives and some of them did come. One of the biggest pushbacks that we had from management, because it is extremely expensive to get to the second phase of the program, which is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Program. A lot of the properties were argumentative about bringing their property standards up to the standards of the program because MTSU's on-campus housing didn't meet those same standards. And when it was presented to MTSU, they argued that they didn't have to follow the same standards as us. So when I'm trying to sell the program to a manager and ask him to put six figures or more into their property, it's very hard when MTSU's not supporting the same standards that we're asking them to support. And then the same thing with as far as one of our properties that housed the basketball team. Because of the height in the crime, MTSU pulled their athletes out and put them into another property that refused to participate in our program. So again, as, and I asked MTSU, you know, why did we do that? And they said, well, because the crime rate was lower there. But, and I explained to them that the, this particular property refuses to participate in this program that we have a MOU with, MTSU. And I didn't really have any feedback at all from it. So again, when I'm trying to sell the product to, to ask these managers to go to their property owners and ask them for sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's very hard to, to get them to buy into it. So that, those are a lot of the struggles and that's the reason why, where I think we have not been able to take off with the program as we would have liked.
Harry teaches a course, and I don't know if he's still teaching it or not, but I went through that a year ago or a year and a half ago, I can't remember how long ago it was. And you don't realize the difference the design can make in relative, in relative terms of asking, whether it be an individual property owner or MTSU, to bring those facilities up to those standards is probably a very minor cost relative to what it's costing us overall to police, but also to build in, in terms of building new facilities elsewhere. I mean, um, that, one other thing, I don't know if we can do this or not. We're talking about publishing, um, those that are participants in the program as they go through customs. Do we publish crime data of, hey, you're the bad person over here that has, you know, these incidents at this? Can that be done?
Um, well, the problem that we have is the ones that participate, the properties that participate in customs are the ones that have, again, they have entered into the first phase of our program. Unfortunately, because of the high turnover, as you mentioned, a lot of those managers are no longer employed. Um, and because of COVID, we had stopped doing our training because obviously management doesn't wanna send staff into an environment and risk them getting sick as, as well as we don't wanna have outside staff coming in and risking any of our people getting sick. So it's kinda been on, on pause. So I haven't been able to certify any of those properties. But the ones that do it, uh, tend customs, the one, again, they're all kind of involved in the program because they have to be in order to go to customs. But we try not to throw shade on, on them because obviously we're trying to build partnerships. And if we start saying, well, you don't wanna go here because, you know, you have a risk of your apartment getting broke into or being shot, then we're not really working as a partnership. We're just kinda hurting their reputation and, uh, which is, I think, kinda what happened a few years ago, um, where some of the properties, um, were fingered out that they're the problems, which, you know, whether they were or not, it wasn't for me to say, but that was a big obstacle that I had to try to explain to them is that it takes an active management. And if the active management isn't going to clear out the problems when we bring the problems to them, then all we're gonna do is keep dealing with the same problems. And, and just like you had talked about, um, over in Arizona, going to that same community over and over and over and over again. And, um, the cost, which you had mentioned, is not nowhere near the cost of losing a life. And if we're gonna lose a student or a non-student for violence because these property managers refuse to bring the properties up to the standards that we recommend, then you can't put a price tag on that. There's no way.
Is there a way, like, is, is there a way that we, if, if you've got the good apartment that's doing what they're supposed to, and in the market we're in right now, if it's a 95% occupancy at the good apartment and it's a 95% occupancy at the bad apartment, I mean, what can we do to incentivize or promote the people who are doing it the right way? I mean, you gotta think that, I mean, that happens with the council when somebody who's a good developer comes in and they performed and they've done well, well, then sometimes they get the benefit of the doubt because they perform. What, how do we get the people who do it the right way and say, this person's getting this benefit because they're doing it?
And that's a challenge in, in, in and of itself because a lot of times you'll have property owners who are really concerned, who are really trying to make the effort, but just because of the, the individuals that I have at their location, they run into a lot of problems. Whereas some persons, some may have to put less effort into it. So that's a huge challenge, challenge in trying to, uh, trying to, uh, figure out who's going along and wanting to participate and those that are kinda just brushing it off and just going through the motions. Because I know we've had some people that were really, uh, really trying to do their best, but I, I know that just their clientele at that time just caused a lot of issues.
The Elites who are on East Main Street that are across from where Far East used to be, you know, when they, they, he came, I remember when he came in and we were having this discussion and they had.
Yes.
Motion sensor cameras in their corridors. They had somebody who was monitoring parking with their passes to make sure that people who were not supposed to be there, were not supposed to be there. And he went through all the things that they were doing. And they had little, you know, didn't have a lot of crime on, on, my guess is they probably sold it by now.
Yeah, and, and that's still, uh, East Main.
That's the property that I was just mentioning too about the sports team. And they didn't wanna participate. Um, and they, because they felt that the crime rate was low and they didn't need our assistance, which, you know, we all know that the crime rate can change, just like that. So unfortunately, um, and, and the rate is still not as high as other properties. However, they still have their share of problems.
Yeah. And I know the environmental design on that's something that we continue for newer complexes, but it doesn't help the, the situation that we're experiencing.
But we really haven't approved a lot of new complexes around MTSU that I, I mean, besides that one, I can't remember a lot of new ones around.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
A lot of the stuff that I'm, because planning is, is talking to me as far as, you know, my recommendations and I, I give them the standard speech, but most of the stuff I see that comes across, it's all on the west side, which is conventional housing, which is not the same problems we're dealing with the student housing. And I know, and you mentioned one of the properties, I'm not sure, I know the Point, uh, which is, which, which was our busiest property. The owners have come in and, or they're gonna make it conventional. They're in the process of doing a lot of remodeling now. So hopefully that will take care of some of those issues.
But the, the group that bought the Point, which is the one that is by Northwoods, right?
Yes, sir, it's on North.
There's a reason, I mean, that's the thing. The incentive that they got to buy that was because it got so bad over there that they bought it on the cheap to be able to put money into it.
Right.
The issue we've got is some of these Reeds who are out of Texas or wherever, New York, they, they're just looking at the pro forma, they're not looking at what needs to be done.
Is there any way we can make it more difficult for the name changes? You'll give some to just give run, 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 run down. And then all of a sudden, all change the name, then, then kinda take a peek because we're building that name and it's not coming up with all the bad press. And then run down again, change the name, run down again, change the name.
Well, and, and if I can add to that, a lot of times when the name change, it's usually, it, it, right. Well, I don't know about that, but I know it's usually the same owner. But it's a new management company that'll come in there. Um, because most of these properties are not managed by the owners. Most of the owners, like you say, are Texas, Arizona, Florida, um, and they're corporations that just come in there and they buy these properties and they have zero vested interests except heads-on-beds and that's all they want. So when the name change comes, it's usually because there's a management change, not an owner change. So, um, yes, you can, you can stop the name change, but I don't know if that's really gonna help because all you have to do is go in there and just Google the address, because the address doesn't change.
I just, you know, look, I don't know what the right solutions are. I'm, I, I, in my opinion, I, I would ask you guys, Greg and whoever else needs to be involved in this to be, you know, thinking out of the box. And, and some of these things, I mean, I think the only things that you can do right now that are gonna be effective are gonna be harder and are gonna feel a little big-stickish, you know? I think that's just the reality of this. And what we got inside is whether or not we're willing to swing a big stick in order to reduce the chances of a 20-year-old getting killed or a bunch of 20-year-olds getting knifed or beat up or whatever the case is in a violent crime situation, you know? So, um, you know, that's, it's not gonna be, there's not gonna be some easy little incentive. I mean, I, I think we, the incentive could be a part of it, right? But to me, it's probably gonna take four or five different things. It's gonna take, and, you know, part of this discussion, we're talking about MTSU, right? And how are we gonna partner with them on multiples of these issues? I mean, we probably need you guys to, to y'all understand the process better as it relates. And, and, yeah, you say they may not ever be able to give us back information, but maybe what we need to be doing is getting a report from you guys every month, quarter. I don't wanna run y'all up every month or whatever, but every quarter.
Yeah, we could do this.
Say, look, there were this number of calls for service within two miles. This number of those calls of service were to this type of housing. I won't just pick multifamily, but if it's multifamily, it's multifamily. If it's not, it's not, whatever. I mean, we just see the data at least. You know, like for me, I'm not making a motion here, but you know, maybe we, you know, maybe the council needs to say, look, we're gonna put a moratorium on any more multifamily within two miles of the university, period. Some other council can always change it, I get that. But at least there's a statement being made that this is something we think is important. And, you know, maybe that then is a little bit of a stick, but it sorta is what it is. If MTSU wants to have a place to put their students, they're gonna have to drive somewhere else where there isn't crime, where you're talking about, or the dorm. You know, I, I don't know. We gotta give them, and, and look, I'd participate all day long. You know, at the time, a lot of this stuff was going on, MTSU was asking us for money. I'll, you know, skip the, this, this details of that, but, you know, they're asking us for taxpayer dollars. I mean, I, there are a lot more things on the priority list of what I think taxpayers would be willing to partner with MTSU. And certainly one of those, I think, is crime and safety, above and beyond some of the things that I think we've been asked for. Okay? And so I, I, I would be open to those conversations. And I guess I'm saying that publicly on purpose, you know, that I'm not trying to just beat MTSU up. I'm trying to partner with them. I'd even put my money where my mouth is on some of this stuff if they agree to, 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 to go down that road. I mean, I, literally, it wasn't Dr. McPhee, but another leadership position person on, you know, said that dorms were a bad business model for the university. Well, you know, they've just pushed that bad business model out on us, right? I mean, that's now our bad business model in that heat map.
Right.
So just, uh, you know, I think we just, somebody's gotta come up with some ideas, they're out of boxing. And this is one of those deals that it's like this. Just because we talk about it doesn't mean, or just because somebody says, hey, here's an idea that might help, doesn't mean we're all saying, this is what they gotta do, my God, they better do it or else. It's just, we need to hear some options.
Can I, can I offer one? If, if I'm out of turn, please. And I don't know legally if we can do this, um, but I do know that, um, the training that I've been through, there has been some jurisdictions across the country that have tried this. But if, if we can break down the services that we're providing them through public safety, you know, fire, um, and police, and we look at it, they're using a percentage higher than other commercial businesses, look at them and say, okay, well, their taxes that they're paying into is not equaling the amount of services that we're providing their residents and use that as an incentive and then go back against the property management because the property management isn't controlling their residents to prevent.
Apartment complexes, not MTSU?
I'm, no, I'm, yeah, I'm talking about, uh, yes, sir, I'm talking about apartment complexes because bottom line is they're out to make money. So if we can charge them for these extra services that we're providing to the fire department, getting up all hours of the night because we have a shooting or stabbing or robbery or whatever it may be.
Yeah, let's go with it.
Um, I think, I think if we hit, if, I think.
Right now.
Well, like, like I said, I just, I, I, I.
That's legal, that's good.
If we go after. Well, like I said, I just, I think if we go after that, I think they'll realize that, okay, look, as long as we continue to have these problems, my tax base, I'm going to have to continue to pay 10%, 15%, 20%. I don't know legally if we can do that.
David, I think, I think we've got, Harry, it's a great idea because I think y'all got research on that because that's the conversation we had seven or eight years ago when we were dealing with one of our hotels out on 231.
It crossed my mind as you were saying that.
At the interchange and if, Chief, if I remember, I think we had 1,800 calls in an 18-month period, we were averaging like 100 calls a day. And the idea was this, this hotel even got to the point where they were telling their residents, if we find out that you call the police, then we're going to evict you for calling for service because the calls had gotten so high.
They're charging like 50 bucks if they call or something.
Well, and they, you know, wouldn't let you, you can't open your blinds, you know, they didn't want anybody seeing in the, so, but we talked about that, about, hey, coming up with what a, what an acceptable call rate should be. And once you get above that, you're costing the taxpayer, you know, we're subsidizing your, your business, we're providing security. So I, we, y'all've got research on that.
And my recollection is that we concluded that was not something we could do.
Something surely's changed now. I mean, we.
But you know.
One of the problems is that while we look at that, we're directing it at the motel, the impact is on the residents. Pure and simple. So they just kick, they kick out the residents and oftentimes the resident that called for service was not the one who caused the problem. They were the ones that were getting beat up, so they called the police because they're getting beat up. Now that person gets thrown out in the street because they called the cops because that's a, I don't think that's a workable solution, but we'll dig that out.
Y'all researched to find out what other communities are.
And we did something similar with the large gatherings. That's, that was the model that we used for the large gatherings was to cite the landowner, the property owner.
And that really, that, that started over the complex that we had at Rutherford, on Rutherford Boulevard, we had a.
Yeah.
And that stopped it. I mean.
Yeah.
Well, we can't just be scared, I mean, about what David said, honestly. I mean, you can't just be like, oh, I mean, look, I disagree with it. I mean, it's, you can't just go, oh, well, this guy's, you know, they're going to get, it's going to get passed on to them and so it's a terrible idea. I mean, look, at the end of the day, it's a company that's trying to make money and money's what they deal with. And if they have to raise their rents, they don't be able to afford to upgrade their properties. I mean, you know, whatever, I mean, it's either going to be going downhill or it's going to be going uphill. And if we can have, you know, have a part in making it go uphill instead of downhill and getting upgraded, you know, we can't just be scared of, well, somebody might get kicked out one day. I mean, look, I just don't, I'm not, I'm not, not born in a.
And they're going to be vetting their applicants at that point, too.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have to upgrade their applicants and make sure that they're doing, you know, getting people that aren't going to be in that, putting themselves, putting them in that position. They might take everything a little more seriously.
And to answer to his statement that he had made, and I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
I'm David Ay.
David. The way we teach our program and Ronnie, you may remember in it that, I know you said we can't hold the residents responsible if they get robbed. However, a lot of the things that we're seeing is it's, sometimes it's the residents, but sometimes it's the guests of the residents. So the residents in our lease addendum that we provide, if management chooses to use it, the residents are held responsible for the actions of their guests, which can cause them to be evicted. So if, let's just say it's a complete innocent person and because the property management refuses to protect their residents per se by putting these security standards in place and evicting out the, the residents that are causing the problems or having the guests that are causing the problems and the, and the money gets turned back on to the property management because an innocent victim had to call the police, it still falls, and this is my opinion, but it still falls back on the management because the management is not providing the resident a safe place to live by allowing this behavior to continue. So when you say that it's not necessarily, because the resident doesn't get kicked out if they're a victim of a crime, but they get kicked out if them or their guests are involved in a criminal activity. So we're not saying to kick a victim out, but what we're saying is that we have to hold management responsible by allowing these residents that are causing the problems to continue to remain there, which is causing our call volumes to go up and hence cause the criminal activity to go up.
I think y'all need to get together and come up with, I mean, so what Rick was talking about, Ronnie, is, you know, the conversation we need to have with Dr. McPhee is, hey, what is MTSU's plan on student housing moving forward? And if they say, look, we're not interested in doing student housing, then that's where the big stick comes in on, hey, here's what we're, here's what we're going to do.
Well, I mean, and I don't even know that's the, you know, that's the stick, but I'd say stick.
Yeah, I agree.
I can come up with it right now, but whatever those sticks are, I think we got to, we got to be prepared to employ them if we're prepared. If not, we're just going to sit around and let it happen. I mean, that, if that's what four people say, that's what four people say.
I don't think, I don't think anybody.
I mean, you know, I'm just kind of saying, in my opinion, it's kind of the same idea. We give them, we've been giving, we've had these conversations already a year or two, but if we need to give them some more time, work through it. And look, if you can't make some improvements or make some changes on this, okay, that's your business, it's your issue, it's fine, but here's the direction we're going to head with it, you know? This is what we want the city to be, to be, to look like.
And just know our efforts in those areas are going to continue regardless of what happens with the housing situation. So we're always looking at ways to address crimes in those areas. And when we look at the crime-free housing program, I asked Lieutenant Hay to come up with a draft of a different version of that to where maybe it wasn't as complicated for some of these complexes to be able to participate because of financial restrictions, whatever, but to still address the SEPTED, the partnerships, the reporting, those types of things and still try to have some kind of effective program that maybe didn't have the obstacles of the, of the program we're currently using. So know that that's something that we're going to remain committed to, whether or not we have involvement from the MTSU or whoever. I think that's important for us to have that partnership with the complexes.
I'd like, I mean, for me personally, I still go back to very deep, I'd like to see some data on some of this stuff to see whether or not, you know, hey, look, if some of this anecdotal stuff that you hear, is it, is it backed up with data? You know, it is a lot of the crime, you know, we'll call between 18 and 23 or 4-year-olds, you know, that kind of deal where that would encompass not necessarily students, but maybe that's as close as we can get. I mean, I would like to know, even if we don't get information back from MTSU, I'd love to see the report on how many we do get that are confirmed MTSU so that we know.
How many we send, yeah.
If it's one a month, well, all of a sudden, all this anecdotal stuff I've been hearing, I'm like, well, crap, that's not that big of a deal, you know, it's coming from somewhere else and we need to address it some other way. If it's 25 a month, well, hold on, we do need to be asking for partnership a lot more vehemently. That'd be, that'd make me want to swing a bigger stick, so to speak, right?
And they can probably give us aggregated data, they can give us on a particular student.
Our own police, yeah.
Yeah, well, ours, ours, we can get ours.
Aggregated is all, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, aggregated data.
I'm not talking about people's names.
If they're willing to do it, they can give it to us.
I don't, I'll be as a likely aid group even for that matter, right?
Oh, our data, we can ease, yeah, we can get that, we got data analysts to do that.
Yeah. But, you know, what we can, we can talk about these maps and, but when you look at the city overall, it's, you can't dispute though that we have other areas of dense apartment complexes that do not see this type of activity. And the common denominator, and I'm not saying Stewart's involved in all this, but the type of housing that we're seeing, a lot of the issues cater to the student, the student groups.
We've heard we had a little bit of data to make sure that we can say, yeah, I mean, this makes it just more likely than it, you know, look, we can look at that and kind of, I think all kind of say, hey, it obviously is a factor, right? But we need to have some data in front of us if we're going to start taking this, our partners and asking for help.
Because probably what you'll find is these areas that have high density student populations also attract individuals that aren't students, that, that tend to fit in with the student crowd. So they're, it's pretty complex when you sit down and look at it, but, but you cannot dispute the fact that, that the majority of these apartments cater to the students. So.
Craig, do you know, from a standpoint of, I was surprised to hear, it's just, I hadn't heard it before, you say that, we had the conversation with MTSU about, you know, the example of you can go over here and not get in trouble, go over here and get in trouble, and MTSU not really say, you know, I understand they may not be able to tell us what they do, but there's something about me that feels like they should probably take a little more responsibility for their student because they can, right? They've got a hook that we do not have. Is that common? Because I mean, I know places where you go to school, if you do something like that, you're gone.
Yeah. So I, well, I, yeah.
I mean, if they have some of these issues we're talking about, you're no longer a student, have a nice stay, we wish you well.
Yeah. No, I think there, there are other places that I know of that work closely with the local jurisdiction and the judicial boards at the university. So I don't, I don't think there's anything that prohibits that, but it's just a willingness on the part of the university to really take that up.
But the other piece of this too, and for those that were, everybody probably did this, but were in a fraternity in college, I can remember when we would have problems at parties, they were not our people and usually they weren't college students. They were people that showed up and then stuff got out of hand.
Right. And I think a lot of that gets addressed with the mandated, mandated that you live either with a parent within 40 or 50 miles or in a dorm on the first year. Because that, that first year after that, it changes somewhat because you've broken ties from the past, first year, second year, and then third and fourth year, you're a little, it's a little bit different on that population. So I think that helps a lot.
That Sean Murphy for the first time at the fraternity house as he was, Officer Murphy was knocking on the door, coming in, checking on things.
Remember that time when those canes came down to SAE?
Yeah. Chief, it would be good for y'all to get together and come back and re-brief us on the crime-free housing and then also maybe annex what you're planning on with technology and then if there is a more aggressive step that we need to take in that arsenal, it's probably not the right words to use, but in our toolbox, that, I think that would be good. We can, we can, the questions that y'all are asking about the J-Board, I mean, those are the questions I think we ask MTSU as they're here. And I mean, they don't want the area around the university to be any more unsafe than we do.
That's right. That's a problem for them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, this goes all the way back to when the issue happened with Tina Stewart and, you know, we, that really is what started this discussion and so, I mean, I know Dr. McPhee shares that.
Look, here's one thing that is true though, when you say it's a problem for them, it's really not unless it's published.
Yeah.
Okay, what, what's published right now is on-campus crime, which has a totally different set of rules and which houses very few of their students. Right? What's not published is that heat map right there when somebody's trying to make a decision whether or not they go to MTSU.
That's right.
And it's also difficult, I mean, I've had personal friends of mine whose kids are coming to college, MTSU called me and say, hey, where, where does my kid need to live? Where do they not need to live and all that kind of stuff? And look, you know, I kind of know, but because we don't want to point any fingers and all that kind of stuff, I also don't know.
Well, that's where I was called with the name change and they go, clients call me all the time, my kid's going to MTSU, is X, Y, Z apartment okay? It's not an address, it's a, that apartment name.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, I think that's, this is part of why, what I think we're trying to have this conversation about is not necessarily pointing fingers, but again, trying to be a partner here to help us rather than we're just out on our own island and we're going to do what we're going to do and they're going to do what they're going to do and that's y'all's problem because it's not a good business model for us. You know, and I've been trying, I mean, that's all I can say. I have tried that route and still will if there are some ideas that'll fix it. And to me, the, you know, maybe one of those ways is to start saying, there was 150 18 to 22-year-olds and I'm not, we're not saying they're all MTSU students, but we confirmed that 63 of them were last month that were involved in crimes that we don't want to have happen here, right? And if, you know, if, if that is the stick we need to swing, maybe that's the stick we need to swing when we start monitoring odor around the landfill. I mean, we got to start, you know, you got to start calling stuff what it is.
Right. And I know I'm going to be redundant and I know it's getting late, but you know, we'll continue the enforcement, we'll bring the technology because we do have plans for all that around campus. But I mean, undeniably, in my opinion, the, the whole housing component is some, is something that has to be looked at because the, the influence of the university over its students living in housing that they regulate, I think that's pretty impactful and.
We all, I mean, I, did, I, did you live on campus, Ronnie? I mean, I lived in Judd Hall, so I mean, I think we all, you know, but, hey, so it's been three and a half hours.
No.
But I, I mean, these.
We did four.
This is a great, this is a great discussion.
Thanks, Chad.
Craig, the two things if we could, if, ask, if you wouldn't mind summarizing all of this.
Right now?
No.
Next 30 minutes.
But if you wouldn't mind summarizing all this and sending it out to all of us so that way we're prepared and can come up with what that next frame is going to be for MTSU and to invite Dr. McPhee to come sometime in February. And then if you guys are okay, I'd like to invite and hopefully they will reciprocate to open that dialogue to maybe once a month, invite MTSU to come to the council meeting to speak under, under other business to update us on what's happening around the university. If, you know, if, if Dr. McPhee wants to send someone to talk about MTSU's dairy farm, I mean, I, but I think it would be good, hopefully, I'd rather it be Dr. McPhee come once a month if he can or send someone that if we do need to ask questions, we can, but hopefully they would reciprocate that at the, the board, at their board level if they have questions about some of the things we're talking about today. Because, you know, I want y'all to know, and I think we all agree this, that, I mean, there's not, none of us want to hurt our university and I think we all want to partner with the university. And when you have to have these tough conversations, it's easy for things to get turned that you don't care about your university and that's not the case. So.
There's always room for improvement. You guys know, whether we're talking about the city or, or, you know, the university or whatever, there's room for improvement and these are things that I, you know, these are actually three things or layouts, that there's some room for improvement and we just got to get on board and, and just call it what it is and try to do what we can do to fix them in the best way we can, you know? And wanting to improve the university is dang sure not going to tear it down. I mean, you know, that's the exact opposite. If we have less crime around the university, I can't imagine how you can argue that we're being negative on the university, right? I mean, it just is not how that goes. So I don't want to be spun in anything, it's not either.
All right, well, Stan and Jer.